Mike, there we go. All right, good evening, everyone. Time is now 7:01 PM and the date is August 4th. And we're here tonight for our regularly scheduled meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
So the first item on the agenda this evening is the Town Manager's Update. So I'll pass the mic off to Jim Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Members of the Council, folks listening at home, and those of us who are in the audience tonight. Just a few updates for the evening. This week, the state lifeguard races are going on. They begin tonight in Narragansett, Tuesday night at Roger Wheeler, and Wednesday night, Roger Wheeler, Thursday night Scarborough, Friday night Westerly, and Saturday night at Second Beach. They've already started this evening. If you came by the P, you probably saw some of the lifeguards swimming back and forth. Our EMS division of the Fire Department just completed their 2025 evaluation for their services, and I'm happy to say they passed with flying colors. I'll be giving you more on that in the near future. We did receive a grant for the senior services. We're receiving a total amount of $26,000 for the grant for senior services through the funding is from the Rhode Island Office on Healthy Aging. This was an increase from last year's grant of $24,000. Speed study was done on Earl's Court from 7:21 to 7:25, where 792 vehicles passed through that location at an average speed of 24 miles an hour. Speed limit there is 25. The Camp Cronin saga, there's much chatter about it on social media, but I'm here to give you the facts. I spoke with Brett Smiley, the Mayor of the City of Providence regarding this matter, and it won't even go before the Providence Finance Committee until at least September. And I will keep you posted when more becomes available. I nominated Town Clerk Sarah Masson to be selected for the scholarly leadership program that commences in the fall of 2025. It's called the Municipal Leadership Academy, run by the Rhode Island Leagues of Cities and Towns. Some of our other employees have attended it as well. It's a great program for our leaders and management, and we were informed that Sarah has been accepted into the program. I will nominate leaders. I will nominate leaders in our town for every two sessions. So it'll be two per year. Chief Rikus has informed me that NPD officers and the CSOs have issued more than 3,000 violations since the beginning of the summer, 130 of them in the Boone Street area. The agenda item that was passed by the Council amending the parking ordinances affecting the Boone Street Playground, the Leroy Thompson Memorial Playground. Words gotten out about the new ordinance, and it appears to be working. CSOs and NPD have been issuing some tickets, and on my daily drives through the area, it seems to be working. It appears to be several spots that remain vacant for extended periods of time, and the playground users are there. So we are happy about that. And that is about it. Would you like me to comment anymore on the wastewater or let that go when we have the discussion on it?
Proactively is fine. If you have a comment to make on that now, it's fine.
We have received some complaints from some neighbors. Justifiable that the odors from the plant. Many times we get complaints, and they're not connected to the plant. They're an outfall, unconnected to our system. And the dried seaweed and the sun beating on it creates a stench that goes with the wind. This time, there's been in July and August, very high-peak times in Narragansett where the plant sees approximately 120,000 gallons a day above the normal flow that comes into the plant. And that waste goes into the plant and is processed. It takes time to do it. The capacity of the tanks are only so much, and it moves at a much slower pace with the increased sewage coming in. The heat of the water and the heat of the air during these peak periods, along with the 120,000 a day, it does slow down the process. We have been addressing it. Scott Goodson, our superintendent, and John Giar, our town engineer, have been working on it. They've been adding a deodorizer to it and putting some chlorine products to expedite some of the processing and to reduce the odor. It has reduced, and we anticipate that it will reduce more. Again, this issue only surfaces on occasion, July and August. The plant can only handle so much. And we're sorry for any inconvenience, but we are working on it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone have any questions for Jim before we move forward? Nope. Sir, if you wouldn't mind just during open forum, asking your question. Thank you. Moving forward on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there, and before I make a motion to approve the approval of these minutes, is anyone on the council, was anyone on this council not present during any of those? Good. It would have been reflected in the minutes. All right, so is there a motion to approve the minutes of items B1, B2, B3, and B4?
Motion to approve B1 through B4.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Next, on to open forum. We will start with whoever has signed up for open forum first. And just as a reminder, the comments of citizens addressing the council are neither adopted nor endorsed by the body but heard as requested. Public comment will not be taken on any matters involving open litigation. And please, if you haven't, ideally you will have signed in to speak, but if not, please raise your hand afterwards, and I will call on you. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and address. Speak only on topics, not on the meeting agenda. Three-minute time limit will be given per speaker, and please be respectful and orderly. So Jim, who do we have so far signed up?
The first sign up is Carl Wallenstein.
Carl Wallenstein, Point Road. Thank you. I want to go back in time to the action of the Town Council on June 16th approving the ADU amendment. A number of us spoke at that, questioning it both procedurally and ethically, and I want to address both of those issues today. On the procedural side, and just to remind everybody, that was the Town Council meeting where an amendment was made to the ordinance to exclude sellers in addition to basement from the far. A number of people, including members of the Planning Board, made the point that that amendment made by the Town Council should have been referred back to the Planning Board. It was not done. Advice of the Solicitor was that it was not necessary. I have engaged counsel, and I'm going to provide a copy to Town Solicitor Joe Larissa, who's a very well-known Rhode Island litigator, former Chief of Staff of Governor Alvin, and also counsel to the City of Charleston. And he basically concludes, and I'm not going to go into this in great detail, that the Zoning Enabling Act requires that amendments be sent back to the Planning Board for review. And it cites, interestingly, a prior lawsuit brought against the prior Town Council by the Narragansett 12100 group as authority for that proposition. So I'm going to provide a counsel to, a copy of this to the Town Solicitor, and I think it's very important that this be addressed because I think this is a procedural irregularity. The second point goes to the ethical issue. A number of people made a comment as to the conflict of interest of Councilman Durkin on this. We requested that he get an advisory opinion on this. He did not. A citizen's complaint was filed with the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, and on July 29th, just a couple of days ago, the Commission formally opened an investigation based on that vote for the ADU amendment. Now, I just note that the Rhode Island Ethics Commission does not bring many cases. They have limited resources, so it's significant that they've opened a formal investigation. This is not a good look for the Town Council. And I urge Councilman Durkin, going forward, if we're going to see other amendments, the 13 amendments coming back, that he recuse himself, and if he doesn't, this complaint will be enlarged to cover that action if there are votes on that as well. And I urge you, President Menzies, to exercise your authority as president to make sure that the ethical rules of Rhode Island are abided by and get advice of the Town Solicitor on what the appropriate thing to do is, given the penancy of this investigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Decomas, 130 Daytona Avenue. Thank you for listening. Well, I should say thank you for hearing. There's been a lot of discussion among residents in the town that you councilors are hearing, but you're not listening to the residents. In your own town charter, Article 2, Section 2-0-5, Conflict of Interest, no member of the Town Council should vote on any proposition through which the member directly or indirectly could financially benefit. I ask you, Mr. President, you need to be a leader. You need to hear. You need to listen to the residents. Residents need due process. You need to step up to the plate. Mr. Durkin should not be voting or even listening to these proposals going forward and providing comment. There is so much impropriety that's been cast on the Narragansett Town Council. Back in 2015, many Johnston officials, including a councilperson, went to jail. And you know what a state judge said? It was the Johnston way. The appearance to many residents in the town is it's the Narragansett way. I don't know whose agenda Ms. Fignalli, Mr. Durkin are advancing. It's certainly not the residents. The residents want a town where rules and regulations and due process is followed. As Mr. Wallenstein noted, we had legal opinion that that is not what's happening. I pointed it out when I spoke to the Town Council before, when you withdrew the 13 amendments. I was told by Ms. Fignalli and Mr. Durkin at coffee with the councilors at the library that the whole impetus for these 13 ordinance amendments was to comply with state law. Your very capable Planning Board town staff has already told you the town is in compliance. There are many larger issues in this town that need to be brought forward, that will be brought forward tonight, whether it's the quality of drinking water or the fact that our sewer system cannot handle the capacity that already exists. But yet you two want to ram it down everybody's throats. Let's be here for the developers. Let's increase the number of people that are building in this town when our facilities can't even handle it now. I really question what your impetus is. It definitely is not the agenda of the residents. Thank you for hearing. I just certainly hope you listen.
The next speakers are Angela and David Such. I don't know if you wish to come up together or separately.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk. I'm Angela Such. I live at 34 DeSano Drive, and I'm here this evening to voice my opinion and concern about the sewer odor that's emanating from the sewer treatment plant near the Scarborough area. I've owned my house since 2003, and in the years past, we sometimes have had odor smells and mostly attributed to heavy rainfall. We know that's not the case this year. I must say, I put a concern in. Ms. Tierney and Scott, the manager at the sewer treatment plant, were very transparent and informative about the situation, and I know that they're doing everything they can to try to alleviate the problem. But in essence, we have big concerns where we are. We can't sit outside. It's very unpleasant, and it's certainly not acceptable, in my opinion, to say that because it's the summer months and that's when a lot of volume of people are here, that we have to kind of deal with it because we want to be outside and enjoy the summer months that we have. I've reviewed some of the 500 pages of the plan, and I understand that the baseline improvement project is set as the priority, but we want to know, when is that going to happen? How immediately are these fixes going to occur? And another thing, my question is, are there standards for odor emissions? Are there odor emission standards? And is there a way to capture what those odors are that are coming out automatically? Not like somebody has to call. You know, houses that live near the landfill up in Johnston, to mention Johnston again, they have capacity to automatically capture the odor. So we should be looking into that, and I guess I want to know, you know, why it took this long and to get to this problem in order to kind of do something about it or to have this plan established? And just the only other thing I will say, kind of in regard to what the previous two people were saying, I would also add that it's extremely, I feel that it's extremely irresponsible that the Town Council is proposing zoning changes that will increase residential usage of or increased usage of any kind at the sewer treatment plant when we can't have a plant that can handle what we have already. Thank you.
Oh, was there another? Oh, perfect. I'm sorry about that.
How you doing? David Such, 34 DeSano Drive. And my wife went over a lot that we wanted to address, but the concerns or the questions that I have is that, I know you said during the summer months, but we've also smelled it also probably during the fall at certain times in softball, we didn't call in, but in regards to the sewer treatment plant. My question is, after all the proposals, I mean, obviously, we need to fix it right away, and I think that was one of the proposals on there, like $36.000 million to fix the facility, just to get it up and running to where it should be, seeing it's, what, 1983 was when it was originally built. And my question is too, is the, it seems to me, I'm not an engineer, but the capacity of the sewer treatment plant is linked with the odor smelling. So obviously, we want to get rid of the odor, but if we have to increase the capacity, because that was one of the other options on there, was to increase the capacity of the plant, but then talking about bringing in more sewage to that plant, and I think that just ends up becoming a bigger problem, and so if we can increase the capacity but not take in more sewage so that we alleviate the smell, I guess that would be my ideal situation. But again, I don't, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the specifics, et cetera. But anyways, we need to do something immediately to get rid of the smell. It's not good for residents, and it's not good for renters. So, I mean, it's just, it's a no-win situation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jack Dwyer.
Good evening, and thank you for the time. I'm a resident of 36 Thayer Avenue, which is adjacent to the Westmoreland Street Treatment Facility. My wife and I, first off, I've lived in Narragansett for over 60 years. We decided we were going to buy that property, and prior to buying it, I spoke with a number of engineers who said, generally speaking, you know, a waste treatment plant is not inherently going to smell if it's well-operated and maintained. And after having moved there, we're constantly subjected to the odor that comes out of that plant. And a little bit of, you know, due diligence on my part, I started investigating a little bit of the downside of continually being exposed to that kind of smell. And we, of course, I want to mention, we've spoken with the facility numerous times. We've spoken with DEM, who's also been involved a little bit with researching, you know, the smell. In fact, a year ago, there was a promise that they were going to go ahead and put detecting devices within the neighborhood in order to understand when they were at a peak smell thing, in other words, quantify somewhat what that odor consisted of. But anyway, bottom line is, you know, as you may be aware, emissions from waste treatment operations, especially hydrogen sulfide and ammonia, are known to cause headaches, nausea, respiratory irritation, aggravation, asthma, allergy symptoms, psychological stress, et cetera, et cetera. My point is, it's more than just an annoyance. Yes, it's embarrassing when you have company over and you have to go ahead and walk inside because the odor is so bad. And then, of course, to read that we're at 70% of capacity and the intent is to go ahead and expand that, we're sitting there saying, wait a minute, is that really, are we operating a state-of-the-art facility today? I think what we've experienced anyway is, yes, there is a reaction. So when we do call Ms. Perez and the people at the waste treatment plant, they do make additives. It generally takes at least 24 hours to begin to have that odor subside. But in the meantime, you know, we're sitting there waiting. Actually, you know what? The efforts lately have not yielded any result. And in fact, I think we're on a two-week stretch where there is a discernible odor that comes out of the plant. So I guess my point would be saying, we moved into a neighborhood that was constructed after the facility had been constructed. Why would the town in Narragansett go ahead and issue building permits if there was knowledge that there was going to be a plant that was going to emit that kind of foul odor and expose residents to unhealthy air quality conditions? Whether it's periodic or whether or not it's constant, I think is irrelevant. You're outside, you're breathing that foul air, and you have to go ahead and adjust your lifestyle to what that air quality is on a given day. I'm very interested to understand what kind of remediation efforts will be taken in order to go ahead and mitigate the problem as it stands today. And if there is to be an increasing capacity, are we going to be building a state-of-the-art facility, or is there going to be something akin to what we have today? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Al Alba.
Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace. So the Planning Board, they did have a two, about two-and-a-half-hour meeting on the sewage treatment. If you're not a member of the Narragansett Town Council forum page, I recommend you take a look at that. So there will be follow-up meetings and discussions on that. And tonight, and today's agenda item, we'll be discussing that further. I was actually a volunteer at the ECO Challenge road race, and I was stationed right near that area, and I could smell the odor. Now, I want to change gears to the old library. I know we're discussing that, and RFP was put out, and right now, that's up in the air, but we should consider affordable housing. We also should look at areas we could build affordable housing. I know where the trap restaurant was going to be built. I guess the zoning officials seem to have shut that down because I guess the contractor put down, knocked down a wall or something to that effect. So I guess there was, we do have enforcement in place. So this gentleman who bought the land, he's at his standstill right now. So we have a vacant lot there. It's not doing anyone any good. Maybe we can buy it from him. Maybe he'll give it to us for a good price. But the point is, we do have enforcement. We do have enforcement. My dad had his place on Ocean Road. After he sold it, the cottage, which he was there when he bought the place, it was approved. People were living in there. When he sold it, it had to be taken down, okay? Even though people were living in there. So we do have enforcement, but we can't pick and choose. We have to, we have to be able to be equitable, fair. And people have been out crying to me, saying, Dr. Alba, please speak. Speak on my behalf. We have to take control, you know, the bulk zoning, removal of the bulk zoning is a killer for some of our neighborhoods. I mean, we have plenty of streets in Narragansett. We've got many mansions on Ocean Road. People have no problems where you have these central street coming down here. You have these big houses, but we also have these other pockets of neighbors, neighborhoods, and we want to preserve that. People want that. People want that. They go, you know, we have modest means. We don't have a lot of money. We can't, you know, we can't afford to move. And this is going to, you know, so we just really have to consider this. We have to be, think of this here, you know? It's very, very important that we hear the needs of everyone, you know? And I know all of you are wonderful people. You're good people. This is why you ran the Town Council, because you want to make Narragansett better for everyone. And I think we can do this, but we have to reach a compromise. There is a Planning Board meeting this Wednesday. If any of you want to attend, it's at 5:30, so I strongly recommend you attend. They are going to be discussing ordinances and enforceability. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarity, it's a Town Council work session with the Planning Board that we will get into more later on.
Good evening. I am Stephen Paglari. I live on 36 DeSano Drive, and I'd like to state that I have had many issues with the odors, not just occasionally, but more recently, some very disturbing and more potent issues that have impacted the quality of life of my grandchildren. I have a granddaughter who now will not go outside. We have a cookout, and she won't go outside. Christ doesn't want to go outside because it affected her, had migraines for three days. So it's a big, big issue for us and the quality of life of our family. I have personally witnessed construction of many, many sewer treatment facilities, state-of-the-art facilities in Massachusetts, and worked on several of them myself. And the level of quality that is needed here to fix this is not just a Band-Aid of $36 million to put a Band-Aid on it. This needs a new construction of a new facility. And my recommendation, I hope taken seriously, would be to put a temporary moratorium on the sewer facility and anyone tying into the sewer line. No, that's not good for business. I get it. I'm a businessman myself, but you've got an overtaxed system now, and to allow any more systems to be tied into that is just irresponsible. It's irresponsible to the town. It's irresponsible to the people that live here. So I feel as though, without taking serious measures, this is not going to get accomplished. The quality of life is going to continue to diminish in the town, especially in that area. I lived in Johnston most of my life, and I watched and witnessed firsthand how quality of air affected my family, and we moved because of the landfill. We come here, and things were good, and things just continually have gotten worse. So to take this to the next level and put on whatever it takes to put a bond issue together and get it fixed properly, I'm sure that the people that are working there can attest to the horrendous facility conditions that they are working with. They're doing their best, I'm sure they are. I commend them for working with their outdated facility and trying to keep it under control. But the more we add to it... But the more we add to it, the worse it's going to get. It's not going to get any better until we do several things. Stop adding to it. We can't afford to add to a system that's already maxed out of its capacity. And it's irresponsible to think that it's okay to just keep adding more facilities, more houses, more properties to that system. It needs to have a moratorium put on it. I'm really surprised that Narragansett Bay hasn't mandated that to actually happen. Because when things are maxed out, then the facility just goes, overflows into the ocean. So anyways, thank you for hearing me, I appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on 11 Garden Court Drive in Narragansett, of course. I'm very upset, I'm very upset about this, and something needs to be done immediately. That sewage treatment plant was built and constructed in 1969. My dad, Carl G. Laro, was thrown out of the meeting at that time when the, when the...
Mr. President, could you please have him address the council?
Oh, yes.
I'm supposed to look at you?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
It's just, he was talking about that the odor was only...
No, I know, I, let me just pause.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, let me just pause, just for everyone's reference, that we are going to be having a public hearing on this very topic. So if anyone is planning on coming up to talk about these particular issues, that might be a better time, so that way you're not restricted to three minutes as well.
That's okay.
And I will continue with your, with your time and give you a couple of seconds back, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I do have a question for you, though, I will ask it after I finish. I think the smell has been there, I grew up there since the age of five, across the street from what was Lido Beach and it's now Scarborough South. I won't swim in that water. I'm afraid I will, I'll get something, there's bacteria, I just don't trust it. Something needs to be done, we can't overtax it, we need to have something new there, and another facility needs to be built in another section of this, of South County, to handle the fishery or the fish, or the, or URI, or whatever areas that need to be addressed, but we can't keep putting everything and dumping it there. It needs to go somewhere else. My question to you, sir, is, you said that the odor is usually in July and August. When I was a young girl, and so when it was put, I was, let's see, in 69, 58, I was 11. By high school, we smelled that smell every day. Horrible, horrible, it was awful. And I will say, my question to you is, the past four years, Scarborough South has been closed, and the reason being, there are no lifeguards. I'm sorry, I find that very hard to believe. I know for a fact that there are lifeguards available. There are lifeguards for all the other beaches. It's interesting that Scarborough South is the only beach that doesn't have lifeguards for the last two to three weeks of the summer.
Just, sorry, that's a state beach and that's a state issue. If you want to talk about...
But the sewage treatment plant dumps into that state beach.
Correct, but again, just, point of clarity, just any questions, if you want to ask them through us, and then we can ask the town manager separately afterwards. That's, this is just how open forum goes, just to help the conversation be facilitated, that's all. Otherwise, any questions directly to the town manager should be asked separately in an email.
Well, he just mentioned if we had questions, we could ask it now.
Mr. President.
During public hearing?
Although I brought, brought that up, would you mind if I just, because I want to clear something up?
Sure, again, I'll pause your open forum time.
Thank you. The Point Judith facility does not process fish waste...
That's right.
...for Galilee, just, just want to be clear on that. And as far as the state beach when they close, we are notified of state closures. If it's related to the treatment plant, we are violated, we're notified. And we were notified that they didn't have any lifeguards, but we did not receive a violation on those, on those dates. Over 180 tests conducted this year for the contaminants, we had one violation? One violation. I mean, it could, it could happen again, I'm not, not debating that, but that's the only violation. But there is no fish waste going in there. As far as the lifeguards go, that is what DEM informed us of, they did not inform us that it was contaminated. We would get notified of that.
Yes, and I realize that no fish were, were being processed, the waste being processed there. It mentioned that something, the fish, the waste needs to be processed, and it's not being processed there, but it's going to need to be processed. And so it should be processed somewhere else with, maybe in a new facility, because this one's already taxed.
Currently, it's shipped out, they don't process it here at all. So it doesn't, it's prohibited for them to enter it into the municipal wastewater system based on their lease agreement and DEM, they don't permit it. I can tell you that for sure. And we have, we have a detection device at the plant that detects non-human waste that would signal the superintendent immediately.
May I ask how, how, I don't know if this is questions, okay? How often is that water tested?
Three times, three, three times a week?
Three times a week, okay.
And that's the affluent, the, we don't have any leakage, just, I will continue a little if you folks don't mind, because...
Well, just, yeah, just, this is against the rules of traditional open forums, so I prefer to not have a back and forth, and for these kinds of questions to be asked during our public hearing so that they can be on record, and then that way we can get more into this dialogue.
How about if I bring those up if they turn to me during the public hearing?
Absolutely, and I appreciate it, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
And I will definitely be back during the public hearing.
Sorry about that.
The president's just trying to be efficient with this.
And is that everyone on the list?
Peg Fredette.
Hello, good evening.
Thanks for your time. I have a couple of business updates that I wanted to give you. First of all, a big shout-out goes to Coast Guard House and Boone Street Market. They're making this employee shuttle work. So just wanted to kind of report that out to you, that they're getting great response from, responses from their employees, and hopefully they're doing their part to ease the parking issues that are normally created in the area. The next thing is, we have a couple of milestones to announce, and for any business to be in business for 100 years is pretty good. And the Chamber of Commerce is, is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year in August. And with that, I did a little bit of a search, and would like the community to know that we have several businesses in this area that have been here for 100 years. So if you know anybody who's running them, congratulate them, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big deal for anybody to survive that long. Westlake Garage, Narragansett Times, Termonese's, of course, is now in Peasdale, but they're, they've been around since 1925. Pure Ice, South Ferry Church, The Atlantic House, South County Hospital, Buckley Heating, Aunt Carrie's, don't we love them? 105 years, and, and so on and so forth. Georges of Galilee, 92 years, Theater by the Sea, 92. Jerry's Hardware, 85 years. So again, we've got some longstanding businesses in this town that have worked really hard. And, and Mr. Durkin, I will show, Durkin Cottage is 80 years. So, you know, Belma, 78 years. I can go on and on, I will publish this in the Narragansett Times, because again, anybody who's been an entrepreneur, anybody who's had a business knows how hard it is to keep up, to survive the highs and the lows, the, the weather conditions, the economy, and the pandemic, et cetera, et cetera. So I wanted to make note that, again, we have some people celebrating, Narragansett Chamber is one of them. We are having a gala at the Dunes Club, August 22nd, to celebrate, invite the entire, every, anyone, it's open to the public, certainly with tickets, but should be a fun time, and we're going to party like it's 1920. So, thank you, everybody.
Awesome, thank you. And I hope other people dress up and it's not just me. In 1920s attire.
I think I might have some of that. That's the last that signed up.
All right, is there, we'll start the gentleman in the front, and then we'll work our way back, and then we'll go into the public hearing.
My name's David Levek, I live on 9 Thayer Ave, Narragansett, Rhode Island. We've been there, I think, about 21, 22 years. In the little development that we're in, there's about 18 homes. Unfortunately, we're not able to tie into the sewer system, and we have to have our own treatment plants within our development. So this problem, we don't even contribute to. But when we say it's just July or August, it might be July and August that you smell it at the Coast Guard House, or Canachet, or maybe all the way down somewhere the other end of Narragansett. In our development around that neighborhood, it's all the time. For at least the last 15 years, we've been calling that treatment plant, everybody in our neighborhood, two, three, four, five, 10 times a week. We get emails between all the groups and the houses on a constant basis. This is a serious problem. Narragansett's a great town, our property values are going through the roof, which is good for all of us, but yet we got this smell which is standing there. For you guys not to take this serious and fix it immediately is unacceptable. I agree with the other guy, too, that you should have a moratorium on anything else going into that facility until this is fixed. We hope you guys take this serious and address it immediately, but it's not a July and August problem. It's a July and August problem for the entire community, but not for the people that surround that property immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Salaberto.
Catherine Salaberto, 48, Earl's Court. First, Mr. Tieney, he left the room. The problem on Earl's Court has been the truck traffic. It has never been speed. I submitted a petition signed by my neighbors, a number of photos of, I mean, tractor-trailer trucks using the street as a cut-through. That has always been our theme from day one. We want a public hearing to add Earl's Court to the ordinance that, there's a number of streets that are known through truck streets, we want it added. Speed has never been an issue, we have never raised this as an issue. It's a red herring that he keeps bringing up because he won't address the fact that the street is being used by trucks. I mean, tractor-trailer trucks, dump trucks, boom trucks, brig septic, nobody even has septic on the street. It's, it's just a constant thing, and it's a danger. We have six kids on the street, none of these trucks could possibly stop if one of them ran out or, or just was in the driveway, frankly. The other day, the kids across the street were selling lemonade, and here comes Cisco tractor-trailer truck up the street, the kids are at the end of the driveway, he honks at them. I was, it was just ridiculous. So speed has never been an issue, at one point, they actually put a speed monitor on the tower. My neighbor said, just tell them to take it down, it's absurd, you don't speed going up a hill, plus you can see it from 300 feet away. Again, it's not speed, it's the trucks using the street as a cut-through. Second, I'd like the town councils to consider the, the need for a commissioner of public safety. Mr. Tieney's a commissioner of public safety, I don't know why, a lot of cities and towns don't even have commissioners of public safeties. I think the police and fire department can run their own departments, they don't need anybody overloading them. Yeah, the last thing is details. When I spoke about details, I was only referring to the details at Galilee. I don't know anything, anything at all about the other details, but I know that they were being paid $35 an hour. I objected to it during the last town council, and Mr. Tieney said, well, we get a certain amount of money, I don't know, from some stupid fund. And I'm like, well, we have plenty of money, I think we can raise their rate. Again, extrapolating from when my husband in the last century took details of the Civic Center, they should be paid $70 an hour for the details at Galilee. And that's the only thing I'm addressing, talking about, I think it should be raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, back left? Oh, yes.
Steven Cicilline, 11, Jessica Lane. Mr. President, I apologize for not knowing the logistics of politics.
That's all right.
I am not a Cicilline politician, so I apologize about that. I live in the area where affected significantly by Westmoreland's stench. You know, I think my dad said when I was a little kid, it's not everybody, it's not always fair, life isn't always going to be fair, but it's really not fair that I can't sit outside on my front porch without the odor being affected all year long. I think my question was answered earlier that I had, when I jumped up with excitement to ask about the stench, I think it's more so over in the Narragansett area, excuse me, the Scarborough area. However, this is a problem that's ongoing for us. As Dave mentioned, my neighbor Dave mentioned, we are not tied into the sewer lines, yet there's two new developments down South Pier that appear that they both have been tied into sewer lines. While I back up to South Pier Road, I'm not allowed to tie into the sewer line, we're not even causing the problem, but we have to sit and smell through it. My question really is, how is it that the folks from South Kingstown can have their wastewater treatment facility located in Narragansett, and what are they doing to contribute to this problem that we're having? Because when we try to call them, they're very nice and very pleasant people, but they're not doing anything other than dropping some more Band-Aids on top of an open wound, and this open room really smells. I would really encourage any one of you folks just to come over to our neighborhood just about any time of the year, just to take a whiff and smell it, because it's unpleasant, it's not fair, and it really stinks. My last point I want to bring to you folks is a congratulations to you guys all for your positions, but I think a big congratulations for not having a air conditioning unit. How do you guys work in such a hot room? Get some fans going over here, will you? Thank you.
Agreed, thank you.
Mr. President, could I make one public comment?
Can, is, can it wait until after everyone's volunteered?
Sure.
Sorry, unless you think it would be beneficial, okay. Yes, over on left.
Carol Spaziano, 12, Wrenstrom Road. I live across the street from the sewage plant, and can I assure you, it's not just July and August. I'm on a first-name basis with Scott, because I'm constantly calling the poor guy. He's doing everything he possibly can, but it's not working. The worst is weekends, because then there's no one to call. And that's when the most people come down to Scarborough South and Scarborough and use the facilities. There's no one from Friday night till Monday morning, and the stench is unbearable. I have to shut my windows at night, I can't grill. I implore any one of you, come to my house. I welcome you to come to my house and smell what I have to deal with. And it's not just me, it's my neighbors also. I implore you, something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Gail.
It's been interesting meetings so far. As a regular at these meetings, I'm sure you know, as I do, that most of the people that have spoken tonight during open forum are not town council...
Can you just provide your address?
Oh, sorry. Gail Scocroft, 19, Prospect Ave, I should know better.
No, that's all right, thank you.
Most of the people that have spoken tonight are not regulars at town council meetings, and I think that is a red flag that you should see waving in the breeze, telling you that we have a crisis in our town. The wastewater report is now public, and I have to ask why you would consider continuing pushing zoning changes that would allow more density in our town? And why you would waste your precious time and our precious time in workshops and in discussions so that you can check a box? It's really imprudent to consider more building when we haven't solved one of the most critical issues that our town is facing. Over $200 million, and that's just the physical plant at the very basic minimum, according to the engineering report. Since you brought the 13 zoning changes forward, several residents in our planning board have asked you why you are doing this. Why? And the only answer that we hear repeated constantly from Ms. Fignali, Mr. Durkin, and Mr. Colonies, is that you want us to be in compliance with state law. Yet, as a previous speaker said this evening, we are in compliance with state law. Why are you promulgating this misinformation? In addition to that, as Ms. Sabo from Planning has said, and as Mr. Brady from the Planning Board has said, we have the ability through the Enabling Act to tailor zoning to suit the conditions and our... the conditions in our own town. So, it's still a mystery to most of the residents why you would continue to push these things forward. So, to workshop these 13 zoning proposals, as I said, so you can check a box, whether it's with the planning board and/or the residents, is a total waste of time. Deal with the crises at hand, get us shipshape so that then we can consider how to solve our affordable housing crisis and not build and build and build so that developers can continue to get rich in our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? For open forum, just as a reminder, a big topic that's been addressed during open forum this evening will also be discussed during the public hearing. So, yes, Ms. Aller?
Jill Aller, Sarasota Avenue. At the very last meeting, I was gavelled down when I asked a question before you went into executive session. And I wanted just to be able to explain my reason for wanting to ask the question. I asked the pro temp who was running the meeting if he'd be recusing himself from the executive session as it was talking, you're gonna be talking about the writ that Mr. Ferandi had filed for the town not enforcing the three student. I was not given a response. But the response was kind of given when you came back from executive session and there were four votes. Mr. Durkin did abstain, but he was there. We'll never know what the discussion was at that meeting, because executive session notes are private and privileged. We'll never know what he said. We'll never know if he influenced any of his colleagues. But he was certainly there. Being on the town council can be difficult. I've been there. And oftentimes, people will ask you to do things that are questionable and they'll question your ethics. I actually had someone one day come into my office and ask me, what would it take for me to get, for me to vote in a certain way? I asked him to leave my office that day. My comments tonight are not political. Mr. Durkin and Ms. Fignalli attended my, my neighborhood meeting not long ago. And one gentleman asked many questions about the proposed ordinance changes and was repeatedly told that the amount of people in the audience was a political statement. It wasn't, had anything to do with the actual amendments, but political. That's just not right. It's not political. It's about the town looking for good governance and ethical behavior by you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Alex, could I make that one?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
There's no doubt, there's, no one's questioning the, the odors that have been emanating from the facility. In the past, it has been other issues. It's clearly, this is a town issue and we are working on it. I definitely empathize with you. There's two plants we have, and some folks are aware of it, some are not. The regional plant, which is located in Narragansett, is actually run by the town of South Kingstown. We lease capacity from that facility with the URI and the town of South Kingstown. They run that. We lease the, the weight, the space for the waste. And Scott and our engineering department is in constant contact with them. They work as best they can to advise them of, of the issues and try to assist. We are fully responsible for the Point Judith plant. We are fully responsible for that. And we will try to do everything we can to try to resolve it. We do not know a full solution on it at this juncture. This wastewater treatment facility plan that will be discussed in the public hearing, it was two and a half years ago, but it's been in the works. It was from, it's two, it's been two and a half years since we've got the draft report. But they are two different facilities. We understand it's our problem. It's a town problem down at Point Judith. And I will be available to speak to anyone after the meeting. I'll stay after my officer in here. And I'll listen to all of you. I'll tell you in detail where we stand. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And if this public hearing and the meeting runs a little lengthy, I do recommend, please, reaching out to the town manager, town council, directly with any and all questions and comments, and we will get them addressed. Thank you. Moving forward, we're now on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there a motion to open and hold a public hearing on the town's draft wastewater facilities plan?
Motion to open and hold.
Oh, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. We're now in the public hearing. And I believe we're going, who, do we kick this off to John first or? All right. So I'd like to invite John up to lead us into this discussion. Thank you. And good evening.
Good evening, members of the council, the public, and town staff, and those viewing online. Just have a brief introduction of what we're here tonight. The purpose of a wastewater facilities plan is to evaluate a municipality's wastewater needs for a 20-year planning period.
Hi, John, just, just for the record, just give your name for the record, thanks.
I'm John Gerhard, Jonathan Gerhard, the town engineer, employed by the town of Narragansett. The purpose of a wastewater facilities plan is to evaluate a municipality's wastewater needs for a 20-year planning period. The town's current facilities plan was approved by RIDM and adopted by the town council in 2007. And a plan amendment is necessary at this time. The proposed plan considers residential and commercial development in town, sewer expansion needs to replace onsite wastewater treatment, treatment systems, wastewater needs for the fishing industry in the port of Galilee, and areas that contribute wastewater to the regional wastewater treatment facility. The town received a grant to fund the wastewater facilities plan from the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, and awarded a contract to Wright Pierce in June 2023 to prepare the plan amendment. The draft wastewater facilities plan was submitted to RIDM in May 2025 and was also submitted to the town planning board at that time. And Wright Pierce made a presentation to the plan at the July 15, 2025, planning board meeting. I believe there's a typo in the agenda item that said the 18th, but the planning board meeting was the 15th in the presentation. A revised draft was submitted to DEM on the 18th of July and was also made available to the public prior to viewing. That's the copy that's online with, with the agenda and the notifications. This public hearing tonight is being held to meet RIDM regulations and allow the public the opportunity to provide oral and/or written comments on record on the draft facilities plan prior to its approval and adoption. The transcript of the hearing, along with any revisions to the draft plan arising from the public participation process and RIDM review comments, will be incorporated into the final document for RIDM approval, which must be submitted by August 18, 2025, to meet the funding agency project schedule and approval deadlines. Once approved by RIDM, the wastewater facilities plan will be presented to the town council for formal adoption. So, and all of the issues that everyone has been addressing tonight, this, the plan is intended to resolve the problems for treatment and to bring our facilities up into state-of-the-art conditions and addressing all the odor complaints so that we have a fully operational and functional facility. And with that, I would like to introduce Andrew Smith of our consulting firm, Wright Pierce, who has prepared a presentation for the council and the public.
John, can I ask you a question? And, and maybe it's for him, but I think he's more of the, is there a possibility that, you know how they have sensors for noise? Is there sensors for smell?
There's odor sensors, but generally what you would be, would be sensing for is the hydrogen sulfide is the primary one that you would look for in, in wastewater. But sometimes, you know, that's more of a stale and septic smell where the wastewater treatment process is a processed wastewater smell, which can be different. But we can investigate to see what type of, what, what type of technology there is. Again, our, our focus has been to try and implement and, and deal with the, the problem at hand, which is, you know, we have a change in the flow characteristics, you know, both volumetrically and, and strength-wise in the beginning, in the beginning of July. And it really kind of kicks the plant at, the plant, you know, off its wheels. The facilities plan, the evaluation they did, you know, shows that, the investigations Wright Pierce did, shows that some of the, you know, the treatment processes are undersized for that peak day that we get. You know, we can handle just about everything else, but that peak day comes in and it really, it really knocks it, and it knocks it for a loop and it takes a while to recover from it. We're in that process of recovering. We're trying to implement the odor, some additional odor control measures. But, you know, primarily to get the plant running and functioning the way it's supposed to be is, is the primary goal.
So, is, is it true that somebody said tonight that nobody operates at the plant over the weekend? Is that, is there nobody there on site?
We're minimum staffed. We have, our, our normal working hours are 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. On the weekends, we have staff does come in. There's laboratory analyses and, and sample collection that are required to be done on a daily basis. So they come in, it's a short shift, you know, they'll, they're there for, and someone, there's, people are on call at all times. So, if there are complaints that are called in, you know, they would call in, they called a dispatch and, and those would get transferred to the, the treatment staff. But the staff is not fully manned on the weekends, though, no.
Yeah, excuse me. I was just thinking that it would be, you know, be nice to just have some, if there was an alarm or a sensor, that the smell reached a certain point where it disturbed people, that an alarm or some kind of notification would come out so, you know, it could be dealt with immediately.
Well, we can investigate what the, what type of technology, you know, that, that has to be incorporated into our existing systems and controls. But again, part of the expansion plans are really, and it's, there's not a significant expansion on, on really either side. It's more, it's more a technological and treatment capacity expansion as opposed to hydraulic expansion. We do talk of, of providing sewers to the, to the unsuited areas of town, but the flow increase is not substantial. It's, it's the capacity and the treatment, the treatment technology that is the intent of, of what we need to have improved.
Right. Okay. So, I guess if I have any questions, I'll wait until after the presentation.
Yeah, well, I probably have some additional questions for you as well, but we'll just wait until after the presentation.
I won't be going home until after we're done, so. And again, like I said, I'll introduce Andrew Smith from Wright Pierce. He's one of the design engineers who's worked on the plan and we've worked closely with to try and develop this, this plan here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Andrew Smith. Thank you for having me. I will just say, hearing the public forum, I, I can feel the, there's some.
Mr. Smith, I'm gonna ask if the, send a bit swear you in, please. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you give in the matter now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state and spell your full name for the record.
Andrew Smith, A-N-D-R-E-W-S-M-I-T-H. So, we, I work for Wright Pierce. We did the facilities plan, wastewater facilities plan update. I'm here to tell you about that project and what we found. There's a lot of information here. I'll try and move as, as quickly as I can so that the public has a chance to, to ask their questions. And here we go. So, our presentation overview. First, we will go over what a facilities plan is. We'll talk about your collection system, the Scarborough wastewater treatment plant. We'll then talk about the regional wastewater treatment plant, and then what our recommended plan is. And then, obviously, time for questions and discussion. A wastewater facilities plan. So the first thing to know is this is a Rhode Island Department, Rhode Island DEM requirement. It is part of the, I guess, state requirements for anyone who operates a wastewater plant to do that. We have, what it covers is some townwide planning. It is for a 20-year period. It covers unsuited areas. It addresses issues for economic development. And then it addresses key areas for environmental protection and concern, you know, for instance, the Narrow River Special Area Management Plan, our Special Area Management, yep, Plan. Will address your wastewater collection system. There are existing pipes in the ground. What condition are they in? There are pump stations throughout town that convey sewage to the wastewater plants. There are capacity issues. And then we have what we call inflow and infiltration. So that's when, you know, some pumps or direct connections or groundwater gets into the sewer system and just adds to the water that has to be treated. We will talk about your Scarborough wastewater treatment plant, the, the permit that it has to abide by. We'll talk about the aging equipment and the capacity issues at that plant. And the regional wastewater treatment plant, you know, which is shared by South Kingstown of Rhode Island. We will talk about Narragansett's needs at that plant as well. So, the planning process. The first part, the first thing we do is we evaluate the existing conditions and we identify what the needs are in the future for town. The next, we look at alternatives to, to address these issue. And then finally, we come up with a recommended plan for the 20-year period. So the first part, we will look at your existing conditions and identify your wastewater needs for the next 20-year planning period. So, to evaluate the existing conditions, first we look at the planning area. In this case, it's the town of Narragansett. We look at the town demographics. That includes, you know, population, you know, housing stock. We look at environmental factors. In Narragansett, the, you know, the quality of the soil for, for typical septic systems is not great. That's one environmental factor. High groundwater table is another one. You know, there's a lot of great environmental resources here, the, you know, the salt ponds, the Narrow River, the estuaries. We look at protecting those assets for the town. We look at your community comprehensive plan, zoning laws. We look at, you know, how that will impact the future needs for the wastewater. And then we also look at, you know, we work with Scott and we get the, the flows, the waste loads and the sewer data that you currently have so that we can then project what you'll need in the future. We do a condition assessment of the infrastructure throughout town. And then, you know, all this leads to a wastewater needs assessment for the 20-year planning period. So, a little bit about the Narragansett collection system. As has been mentioned before, you do have two treatment plants. The regional wastewater treatment plant on Westmoreland Street. Oops, wrong button. Hang on. All right. The regional plant, located on Westmoreland Street, serves the north part of town. That area has 14 pump stations and some other private pump stations, you know, and sewers that all feed that plant. The south portion of town, the sewer system flows to the Scarborough Treatment Plant, which we know is adjacent to Scarborough State Beach. On the maps here, you can see the, the green lines are sewer, are gravity sewer pipes. The purple lines are low-pressure sewers, which are just sewer collection system that function a little bit differently. And then the yellow lines are force mains, which is the pipes used to convey waste from the pump stations to the, further down the collection system. As part of this project, we evaluated your pump stations. What we found was many of the pump stations, you know, are, have aging equipment. You know, there's, you know, electrical equipment that's passed its useful life. This picture in the middle shows one of the wet wells. You can see there's, you know, corrosion throughout. The wastewater plant is not the greatest, the greatest environment for, for pumps and operating equipment. It's not a clean environment. And, you know, so that's, you know, these things need upkeep and upgrade throughout the system. The Scarborough Treatment Plant is in much the same boat as the pump stations. There's a lot of equipment there that is aged and it needs upgrade. I know there was mention of baseline improvements. We'll get to what that means in the, in reference to the plan. But first, I'm just gonna give you a quick walkthrough on how the Scarborough Treatment Plant works. So, what we, so right here, we have the main, the main influence sewer will come in. It flows through here. And then right in this area, there is a, what we call the head flows through here, and then right in this area, there is a, what we call the headworks. And the headworks is where there's some initial screens and some grit removal technology. What that does is it gets rid of all the large debris that might collect in the sewer. Things that, you know, typically you wouldn't think would be there, you know, pieces of two-by-four bricks. Those things sometimes come through, and that is mainly there to protect the equipment behind it. From there, and then we have grit removal, which removes sand and other, you know, non-organic material from the flow. From there, it goes into this little spot here, which is an influent pump station. Now, this pump station, all it does is it, is it pumps the wastewater to a higher elevation, up to this racetrack-looking thing. This is called the oxidation ditch, and it is the, sort of the heart and soul of the treatment process. It's a secondary treatment process, and the way, and it's, it's, this is the way wastewater is treated throughout the world and the country. What it is, is actually bacteria is sort of grown and maintained and used to remove what we call BOD, which is biochemical oxygen demand. So it basically removes the biochemical waste from the water, and it's, and it's sort of a living mass of bacteria that does that. So one thing to keep in mind is that this, this treatment process, it is sort of a living process. It's biological. And so, you know, it responds to things like weather, you know, the amount of food that's available to it, all those sorts of things. It's not just adding chemicals. There's, you know, there's a living component to this. The way this process works is the flow will come in. It'll go through the, actually just uses the first three rings here. And what it'll do is it flows around in a circle, and then it goes into the next circle, and then it goes into the next, I guess oval, I should say. And then, once it's through that process, this was designed for a certain amount of flow, for a certain amount of time to get what we call the retention time, to allow enough treatment to occur. Once that, it's been through this process, it'll flow through a pipe, and it goes into these two tanks, the round ones. And those are called the secondary clarifiers. So after it's treated, the secondary clarifier slows the flow down, and the, the waste forms larger particles called flocks. Those will settle to the bottom of those tanks, and the clean, treated water will flow over the top of those tanks. And once it flows over the top of those tanks, it goes into this last treatment process, which is called disinfection. That's where it's dosed with chlorine, or, and, you know, it stays in there for enough time to get any residual bacteria. And from there, it flows out of the plant, along this path, and it flows a half-mile offshore, so sort of way over here. And out there, there are diffusers out in Rhode Island Sound where that water is released a half-mile from the beach. There's another process that's a part of this. This building here is the solids handling process. So all the waste in these tanks that settles to the bottom has to be processed and disposed of. And the way they do that is there's, they have some, some equipment that takes the water out of it, you know, and it's called de-watering. And it takes most of the water out of it, and then it's trucked away for incineration. So that's a quick overview on how that plant works. Now, this plant, where do I need to point this thing? There we go. You know, this plant does have equipment that's operating past its useful life. These are the pumps in the influent pump station. I believe they're fifteen years old. The, these are the solids handling pumps. They were installed in nineteen ninety-six. Here is photos of the oxidation ditch. So you'll see these, this is one of the key components. This little machine, it's a blower. It blows air into the water because this treatment process requires oxygen. And one of the limiting factors here is the way that this tank is, is at the current flows you have, we can't get enough oxygen into that air with the, with what is existing. And this is the settling tank, which shows, this is where the solids settle to the bottom, and the clean water flows over these weirs to be, for further And lastly, here is the disinfection tanks. These are constructed with baffles so that you get enough detention time. It sort of flows around these. And this last piece of equipment is the de-watering press. So again, the equipment's old, and the other key thing is here, it, you know, the oxidation ditch in particular does not have enough capacity to treat the maximum daily flows that you see at the plant. The last piece of the existing conditions is, this is the West Moreland Plant. It's a similar process, different technology, a similar flow path. I'm not gonna get into this. This is, but what the key points here is we have three regional partners, South Kingstown, Narragansett, and the University of Rhode Island. The plant is located in Narragansett. It's operated by the town of South Kingstown. The capacity at the plant was divided up percentage-wise based on the original capital investment that each town made back in the seventies. And that's, when expansions occur, that has been adjusted. I can show you that in a second. The operation and maintenance cost for this plant is shared on a measured flow contribution. So that regional plant was, the original agreement was in nineteen seventy-two. In nineteen ninety-one, they expanded treatment capacity. And in nineteen ninety-five, Narragansett needed additional treatment capacity, so they began leasing capacity from the university. There's a lot of numbers up here. I'll kind of highlight some of the important ones. Narragansett currently owns about 1.2 million gallons per day. MGD is million gallons per day. That's how we talk about wastewater flows. They lease an additional 200,000 gallons, or 0.2 MGD. So the current available capacity is 1.4 MGD. Narragansett's average daily flow is 0.75 MGD, but their maximum monthly average, which is a, a thirty-day average flow, is 1.69. So that's, you know, higher than what the capacity they currently own. The history here is, when it was originally built, Narragansett owned nineteen percent of the original flow. South Kingstown and the University of Rhode Island each had about forty percent. In nineteen ninety-one, there was an expansion. URI did not gain any more flow because they didn't pay for that expansion. South Kingstown and Narragansett both contributed, and the current, Narragansett currently owns 24.4 percent. I use the, the term owns loosely. They, they, but they do own the capacity, 1.2 MGD, 24 percent. So now that we sort of know the lay of the land, we have, we looked at some alternatives for the twenty-year plan. For the collection system, in the south collection system, the, there are two, two pieces to sewer system expansion. One piece is replacing onsite wastewater treatment systems or sewer expansion. The other piece is planning for, you know, development within sewered areas. The, the plan calls for sewers in the south sewer area, or this, that's adjacent to Scarborough and everywhere except Jerusalem, across the, across the salt pond there. The major projects are, you know, Great Island, Harbor Island, which, you know, those areas are, you know, you know, adjacent to the, the salt pond and, you know, the special management areas. So that's, you know, environmental concern. And then, you know, the other projects are listed here. Just because your street isn't up here doesn't mean that we haven't accounted for that in planning for the plant. This just means these are some of the major projects that would be planned for. In the north collection system, the plan is for providing sewers in all areas except for the West Passage, which I believe is, is right, sort of the northeast corner of town. The major projects here are Bonnet Point and Wandsworth Street area, actually right near the West Moreland Treatment Plant. We did a capacity assessment and condition assessment of all the pump stations. The pumps, there are five pump stations that need to be upgraded for capacity. They, in the twenty, as we expand the sewers, they're, you know, they won't have the ability to, to handle those flows. And then there are other pump stations that just need upgrades to maintain equipment and to continue to meet the existing flows. At the treatment plant, we looked at the projected flows and what we call the waste loads, or BOD loading. BOD stands for biochemical oxygen demand. TSS stands for total suspended solids. So these represent the waste that's coming in. The flow represents the volume of water coming in. The future, the future flows to handle residential, you know, the existing flows plus, you know, the residential and commercial build-out in the next twenty years. You know, the flows are, you know, the average day is gonna, is 1.04 million gallons per day. The maximum day up to 3.44 million gallons per day. And then these are mil, are pounds per day for the, the waste. The other piece of this is the economic development piece in the, in the port, the Port of Galilee. What you'll notice is the future fish processing, if, if, you know, if there was, if, currently the plant does not allow fish processing. There's a whole pre-treatment program. Currently, there are no fish processors that send waste to the plant. But if, you know, if there's, if there's the plan to do that, what would happen is, you could notice the flows increase very little, 1.04 to 1.06, 1.56 to 1.6. But what you'll notice is the waste loads increase quite a bit, or almost double. So the fish processing adds BOD and TSS. It does not really add any significant flow. And the way we plan for this is we spoke to the fish processors there, and the goal here would be for economic development for the town. And, you know, we spoke to Town Doc and, and Seafreeze about what their current operations are and what the potential expansion is. It's a very unique situation where it is state-owned land with the express purpose for the fishing industry. So, and one of the, one of the things that, one of the big things that blocks the fishing industry from expanding their processing abilities at this location is the wastewater, the wastewater infrastructure is the limiting factor. So to address these, we looked at three alternatives for the oxidation ditch, or to improve the treatment process. The first option was to do the best we can with the, with the existing treatment process. And what that would mean is, we saw the picture of the blowers we had before. It would mean adding additional aerators. And then the other piece of it is the way this works now is you, there are three rings that are used for treatment, and you can see they go through the, the opening here and go through to the middle. This outer ditch is currently used for storage of, of sludge and sludge digestion. And what we looked at was if you added this additional outer ring to the treatment process, it would, it would actually double the volume of this treatment process. But what we found was this alternative was enough to handle the residential needs of the city, but it would not provide capacity for the fishing industry. The second option we looked at was what we call primary treatment. So primary treatment would be building some additional tanks here. So the way this would work, if you remember, we had flow coming into the plant, goes through the headworks, goes to the pump stations. Rather than getting pumped to the oxidation ditch, we would pump to what we call primary settling tanks. So this is, this takes the initial flow, and this will, these tanks work similar to these. Solids settle to the bottom. The solids are collected, and then the remaining water flows over the top and would go on to the oxidation ditch. And from there, it would go on through the rest of the treatment process as, as it does today. What we found was that this did not actually do any better than just expanding the oxidation ditch, so we did not expand on that any further. It actually adds quite a bit of treatment complexity to add this, particularly in the solids handling, because these solids that you collect are different than the solids you collect from this process. And it was much more expensive, so that's where we ended that one. The third alternative is essentially to construct a brand-new treatment process. Alternative three would be to abandon the oxidation ditch and to build a new secondary treatment process. It actually would look very similar to the type of treatment process of the West Moreland Plant. If you recall that, that slide, you know, they're rectangular tanks. It's, again, a biological treatment. It would have selector zones which, you know, maintain different types of bacteria in different zones so that you can, you know, basically control the treatment process a bit better. So what that would be is you would have three tanks going into three secondary clarifiers. And this, you'd have a building here with electrical equipment. This, these tanks are much deeper than the oxidation ditch, and the blowers in here can provide a lot more air into that water. And the air is what your treatment process needs. The other advantage of this is there are three tanks. In the winter, you would have the ability to function with two and do maintenance on the third. During the summer months, you would need, you would keep them all in line to have the available capacity. The other piece of this is solids handling. The, the Scarborough Plant currently does sludge, sludge thickening. I think I misspoke before, but it is sludge thickening. So what that does is the solids, they need to, the water needs to be reduced in them, and then this process basically creates liquid sludge that's thicker and is hauled off-site. One of the biggest issues in wastewater treatment today is sludge disposal. Right now, the Scarborough Plant's sludge disposal is at the Wind Socket incinerator, and they have given notice that they will no longer be accepting liquid sludge. The timeframe on that isn't clear, but it's a regional issue, not just a Narragansett issue. So the alternative to sludge thickening is sludge de-watering. A screw press is one technology. What happens with the solids is they go into this screw press, and instead of just getting rid of some of the water, it gets rid of most of the water, and what you get is a, they call it sludge cake. And it's a solid material that would get hauled away in a roll-off rather than a liquid tank. So for the Scarborough Plant, our recommended alternative is to go with alternative three, which would include, you know, abandoning the oxidation ditch. And this could continue to be used for sludge, you know, aerated sludge storage. It would be building the new secondary treatment system, new secondary clarifiers. The additional flows would require some expansion of the disinfection system. The solids handling system, we recommend, we recommend going with de-watering, just because you would then have more disposal options for the future. The last piece that the- The last piece that the, on the recommended plan that the, that the report discussed was what we call the baseline improvements. And what those baseline improvements mainly addresses is the, you know, addressing the aging equipment throughout the plant. So that includes things like the influent pump station, the headworks, you know, the building improvements that are needed, you know, it includes the disinfection system. So that, I heard the 36 million being mentioned, that baseline improvements does not really address the, this, the new treatment system or the solid system, but it's sort of the other items in the plant that need, you know, attention. We're almost done here. At the regional plant, we didn't really, we, our, where this is operated by South Kingstown, our role here was to identify the wastewater needs. And what we found when we forecasted the wastewater flows is an additional 1 million gallons of capacity is needed to meet the needs of the north collection system. You'll see the existing flow is, you know, .75 MGD. The annual average is 1.14 and up to 1.7 for the maximum month. The two alternatives for that are to build a capacity expansion or to continue to lease available treatment as available. The timing of this is such that South Kingstown and URI's planning efforts are a little bit behind ours. I believe they are under contract to do their wastewater facilities plan, so the, you know, the, sort of the solutions here is also going to depend on, on the needs of those So the costs here were some big numbers. The sewer expansion, you know, just over 100 million, you know, this, now this is over a 20-year period. The pump station upgrades, when you take into account the capacity and, you know, the sort of aging equipment needs, 24 million over, it sounds like a lot, but that's over 20-plus pump stations. And then our recommended plan for the Scarborough Treatment Plant is 75 million. And that includes the 36 million for baseline improvements, 33 million for the new secondary treatment system, and 6 million for the solids handling process. You know, a quick summary, the collection system, we looked at removing onsite septic systems. It's really critical for the town. The soil isn't great, and you have a beautiful environment to protect. And then, you know, to continue to support the residential and commercial, you know, build-out and the needs of the current residents. The pump station, we mentioned the capacity, age, and condition-related needs. And the Scarborough Treatment Plant, the Scarborough Treatment Plant, you guys are at, you guys are at capacity, you know, one with the summer heat and, you know, there's no more room for growth at that plant. And finally, the regional plant, you know, it's going to depend on regional planning, but we've identified sort of the, what is needed for an Aragansett's capacity. We already did that? You know, there's my contact information if there's questions. And that's, that's my presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Andrew and John, for being here, and I will turn the floor over to the council to ask questions. But really, really appreciate, it's very ironic, the timing of this presentation with everything that we've heard this evening. But I think it's exceptionally important that these issues get addressed, and, you know, I appreciate the efforts, all the research, the proposals. The planning board has taken, has done their due diligence to read through thoroughly the plan and provide us with recommendations as well, which we will also address as well. But first, I'll start off with Councilor Durkin, if he wants to kick us off with any questions. Or does anyone on the council have any specific questions, maybe?
Yeah, so, so Andrew?
Yep.
Yeah. So when you talked about the Scarborough Plant, the, you called it the racetrack there?
Yep.
Okay, so...
Yeah, the, the technical term is oxidation ditch, but yeah, the racetrack.
Yeah, so the, you said that you could double the capacity by using the outside ring?
Well, you, you can double the volume, that outside ring has the same volume as the inside three rings, but you can't, you can't treat, I can't, if it treats 1 million, I can't treat 2 million.
Right.
So it's not doubling the capacity, it was just increasing the volume.
So then, if you...
Because the limiting factor isn't the volume, the limiting factor is the ability to get oxygen into the water for the bacteria.
So then, you would need to take advantage of that outside ring, and then you would have to do something with the oxinators, the oxygenators, that, those blue things that stick into the...
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah, they're just blowers, they're fancy fans that blow air in there. But the, 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 there's limits on how much oxygen you can get in there, you can't just keep adding blowers. Because of the depth of those tanks, they're about seven feet deep, and just the, there's a limit because of the pressure and limits of the physical properties of water, you just can't get any more oxygen in there. When they're that, the typical treatment plant, conventional treatment plant, you know, the tanks would be, you know, you know, 10, 12 feet deep. So there's just, and, you know, the technology that you can use to get water into those is much different, or get air into those types of systems is much different than the technology you can use on an oxidation ditch. An oxidation ditch is a more primitive technology, much simpler, you know, but it's, you know, it's generally designed for smaller communities, which probably made sense in 1982 in Aragansett.
So, so then, if you did use that outside ring, then you'd need another oxidation ditch to take care of the volume that, that would create, not just the, you know, the air proposal?
So, the, so to get the most out of that oxidation ditch, you would take the outer ring, and you would, instead of using it for sludge digestion, which it is currently used for now, you would add it to the treatment process. So the water would flow through the outside, so if, the water would flow through four rings instead of three, and then you would have to add, I think about, I think it was about eight more blowers. You'd need blowers in the outer ring, and you'd need some additional ones on the inner rings. And if you did that, what we found was that should be able to treat the current flows and potential sewer expansions. What it will not do is it will not provide capacity to the port.
So then, what would that cost, that, without, like, I'm trying to think, as a town council person, that's our responsibility, but I'm thinking that the, you know, the fish processing should be the state's responsibility, you know, because it's on their property, they're, you know, they're getting the taxes from the, you know, it's their operation, so...
Sure, yeah, I guess, one of, you know, as John mentioned before, this plan was, was funded by, by economic development money.
Yeah.
You know, we've worked with companies throughout New England that have used economic development money to address wastewater needs. So, you know, that is, you know, that is an option that's out there.
So if, so, you know, from what I understand, we're not processing the fish at, the squid is the biggest product out of Point Judith, and we're not processing it. We're sending it overseas and letting them process it, and then it's coming back to us nice and clean, and, you know, so...
Right, so some of, I guess some of the motivation from the Rhode Island Economic Development was to look at reshoring some of that production.
Yeah, okay, so then, okay.
So the, you know, the, the history there is, the plant back in the 80s did accept fish waste, and then a pre-treatment program was implemented, so the fish processors were then required to treat the waste down to a certain level so they didn't overload the plant. What that did was it, in the long term, it, it limited, you know, it, that was a difficult process for them to do, so it became more economical for them to do the processing elsewhere.
Yeah, so that's, that's interesting history. We all know about the smells that the pre-treatment eliminated for a period of time, but it does seem like somehow those smells are back. And I don't know, you know, it seems like they did go away in Scarborough for a period of time.
Yeah, I think, Councilor Durkin, that what happened was, there was a pre-treatment system down there, those, those became cost prohibitive to, to the state tenants down there. It improved our, it improved conditions at the plant somewhat, they were still having some violations, but then they ultimately just said, we are, we can't afford to operate these at the capacity they need to, for them to maintain their pre-treatment permits and discharge clean enough waste dust, because basically they have to pre-treat the industrial waste and send us something that's more in line with the normal residential waste. But again, that was 20, 20 years ago, and we've had some expansion, we've had aging equipment, and, and the issue was, is that, you know, essentially, the plant was built in, in the 1980s, and that's, the process is worn down to the extent. We, we've got new, new aeration equipment in there, but it's, it's, it's operating a little differently than the original equipment, and there's some challenges with that, but, but as, as Andrew mentioned, the, you know, the, the retrofitting that outer ring as a treatment process would kind of bring us back to where we were, like you were talking, you know, 30 years ago, when they, in, in the 90s, when they first, first made those pre-treatment upgrades, and like, okay, this plant can handle what we, what we're getting right now, but it can't really do anything else for us, so. And that was, I think I looked in, I just looked it up, it was about $16 million, which was about the same price as, as any of our baseline improvements or some of the other components, so we were looking not to do that. So the, the plan is, is to, to, the baseline improvements were to fix all the old equipment that we can still use in the future, and then the recommendation is that new aeration system, which, like you said, it's, it's deeper, it's designed for those systems. And the whole purpose of this grant that we got for the plan was that, as you mentioned, financially, that the state or the federal government would pony up money and provide the, provide the financial backing for these expansions to improve the economy. You know, it's, it's a partnership we went into with the EDC and, and the State Food Council and, and various other state agencies, including our IDEM. So we're trying to find, you know, the, you gotta get the plan approved first, and then that opens up, opens the avenue up for, for other financing sources.
So is people currently actually looking for that money in anticipation of these...
We can't look, ask for the money, we have to get this plan approved first, and then, and then that's where it opens up, and that's where we...
That makes sense.
I hear it every, every time we have any kind of meetings with, with the Economic Development Agency from, from the feds, that it's, it's like, this will open the door, this will open the door, but we have to get this piece done first.
So are you planning on using number three, suggestion three, going forward, or is that something that the town council decides, or together we decide, or how does that?
Yeah, this, that's what this hearing is for, to get everyone's, the, the public input, and then, and then we go, and then we take the plan, and we, and that's whatever the other public input, your input, but the idea, the intent is to get a consensus on that, we submit that to DEM for approval, then that comes back, and then your, then the council would ultimately adopt it, and then that becomes the town's wastewater planning document.
Yeah.
But if there's, if there's significant changes to this, then we would need to know that, and, and we have to get them into that plan in the next two weeks.
How many weeks? Sorry.
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Next week.
Okay.
That's how it works. I, you know, I don't want to ask all the questions.
No, that's all right, if you have them, you should ask.
Well...
Otherwise, we can just, like, share the floor with other councilors.
Well, I was gonna just ask my questions on the north and the regional plant.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's funny that, you know, I mean, URI's basically shut down in the summertime, so they probably don't create that much use. So is it the weather that creates the smell in the summer, or is it...
The regional, it's, their, their flows are more consistent at the regional plant. URI's flows do drop down, you know, at the beginning of the summer.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the numbers to see exactly what the flow changes are, but, but, you know, generally, it's, it's, again, it's, it is unfortunately a, you know, it's a biological process that, that is dealing with odors and smells. And, and as Andrew mentioned, South Kingstown is in the beginning processes of their facilities plan, which, which actually is what will ultimately decide what the regional plant does for us and that extra million gallons a day, but that's, what it's going to come down to is, their plan will have to incorporate that, that additional capacity that we need, and then come up with the means to pay for it, which is to send us the bill, and again, those, the dollar figures that are, that are presented for this plan don't include the regional plant yet, so that'll be, that'll be an additional area down the line, but again, it's, it's, those, those will be, whether, you know, that'll all, there'll be funding sources and, and SRF loans and, and Infrastructure Bank is where we'll look for those funds.
Yeah, so I just know, when I was previously on the town council, the town tried to help do sewers down in Great Island, and I, I think twice now, they have voted against sewers on Great Island. So I don't know if there's any, like, indication that sewer, septic systems are affecting the pond water, because that would be very helpful to know, because if that's the case, then we would want to push that, but if it's not the case, then I would just let it be.
Well, as, as for instance, the existing plan is very similar to the current recommended, this plan recommended in terms of the areas to be sewed, you know, the entire town with the inception of Jerusalem and, and West Passage. The Great, Great Island and Harbor Island were included in that, but essentially, it's, it's up to the voters there, you know, they would have to foot the bill for the bonding and for the sewer expansion because they would be the direct benefit, so that's, that's what happened in the past, and, and I believe the, the prior plan, you know, was, was written that way, is like, when, when they vote for funding, but, you know, we could, we could still do the, the plant expansions, they, we wouldn't be able to do any of those, or collection system expansions until we had the plant expansion in place. So that would happen, have to happen first, so it's all, it's all intermingled, but it's, it's, ultimately, the voters will have to look at stuff too, if we're gonna bond, bond funds for that, and, and there'd be new assessments for all those new sewers.
Thanks, John.
So I, I think, thank you for the presentation. I think it's, you know, definitely something that needs to be looked at, there's definitely been, you know, there's definitely reason to consider all of this, and I think Alex is right, it's just so coincidental that it's just coming on with the problems that we're having at the plants. So I guess my question is, is there anything we can do to be proactive to help the smell currently now that we can incorporate into these plans in the future so that we're taking, you know, steps to help what's going on now, current, because obviously, this is gonna be something that we're gonna, it's gonna take a long time to do. Just, is there something we could do right now that would also benefit us in the future down the road if we just, you know, when we decide, or if we decide to do this?
Well, any of the short-term improvements would be, would be, you know, whatever we can get out of those at the time to, to benefit the odor controls. You know, the problem, and the key, unfortunately, the, the key problem is, is, is as the, it intervenes in the biological process, that's the source of the smells as well, the ditch with, with the biological process and, and the biomass in there, and, and the sludge digestion channel, that's, that's where it is too. If we can, you know, we're gonna look, we're looking to see what we can improve, but again, unfortunately, it really, I mean, the plant runs terrifically 10 months out of the year, 10 and a half months out of the year. We get a little dip in the influent flow in June, right, you know, as URI's school closes or for whatever reason, we get a little, a little lag in the actual hydraulic, you know, flows through the plant, and then on the 4th of July, it's, you know, the switch goes off, and it's just, it just gets blasted with that one real high daily flows, and, and it's, I think it's com- And, and it's, I think it's a combination of, you know, the old equipment, some, somewhat increased loads, and also the, the, as, as you mentioned, the capacity, the aeration capacity. Some, they, they're just a little undersized or insufficient. So we're gonna look, look, we, we did get some temporary portable equipment this year that we put in the tanks when, when it was coming into, into June and July, but it, clearly, it wasn't quite enough. We're gonna look at to see if we can find another, some, some additional ways. I got some things to review, and I'll review with Wright Pierce as well, to see if there's things we can implement in, in the, in the short term. It's, um, to make those things happen. And obviously, the improvements, as, as we said, that, that new, the new treatment process to replace the current one will be much more efficient, and, and all of the new systems will have the odor control and odor, odor containment considerations will be part of the design process.
Thank you. The planning, in one of the planning board's recommendations, they said that the contract expired in June. Is that a yearly contract, or is that something that we could now negotiate for more capacity? I, I didn't quite understand that part of it.
Well, it had been a five-year agreement, going back to ninety-five or thereabouts, when the first one was. And we had initially, it, it was extended for two years, I believe, in two thousand twenty-three, when we signed this contract with the intent that we would get this facilities planned on, and we would know what our future capacity needs were there for that agreement to be able to be negotiated. And then we, or maybe it was, it might have been even a year before that, but we, we went through one more one-year extension. And then, or, and then we requested another one-year extension this year in March. And they got back to us, we've got verbal agreement that they're willing to, that the URI one is willing to extend the lease. There was some discussion on what the cost was, and, you know, so, so there would be some agreement on whether they were gonna increase the cost or not. And then, but they were, there's also discussion that they weren't interested in doing anything more than a year. So, you know, the whole idea is we need to get, we, we've got these numbers here that are up there on the board, that we, I've sent, we've sent the draft plan off to South Kingston, because they're the managing partner, and they have to incorporate those flows in there. And then, you know, we need to, we need to circle back with URI, because the last meeting we had was several weeks ago, when they discussed, they said they were willing to, to extend the lease, but they wanted to talk different, different numbers to it, and I have not had a response. And I, I, I have to reach back out to them. So, you know, we're gonna need, we're gonna need that capacity for more than a year, because as people are asking timetable here, it's, these things don't happen in, in two, three years. You know, that's, that's when we'd be looking at least, you know, maybe, maybe two years down the road, we could start implementing some of these, some of these construction plans, depending on where the money. But like, as soon as we, as soon as we have the approvals, then we can start looking for the money and figure out where and, and what the exact timetable's gonna be.
Thank you.
So I just want to clarify that, that was the question I was gonna ask. So you don't see this happening for, you don't see these new structures? If we did alternative three, these new structures wouldn't be built for two or three years down the road? Is that what we're thinking?
Probably along those lines, maybe even a little longer for the, for the actual, those major treatment plants. I think the key, because of the age of the plant, is, is more than likely gonna be the, the baseline improvements to get that done, because, you know, the, the can's been kicked down the road for quite some time here, so we need to get that to work. And then, you know, my intent would be to try and, uh, because as, as you see the plan, the plan is to reutilize the, the ditch to basically, instead of just using the outer ring as sludge storage, all four rings. But I think by doing that, we would, we would have the ability to take, take one or two of the rings down and do some maintenance, and try and provide for some additional, some treatment there. But, but yeah, it's probably, you know, it's between design and construction, permitting, you know, it's, it's a, it's an extended timetable.
And as far as URI's negotiations, I don't want to get involved too much with it, but one would think that we have some pull with the amount of resident, student population that we have with them.
Well, it's, as, as I mentioned, I mentioned to someone to speak to earlier in the meeting, or prior to the meeting, that it, it, the consideration, the amount and what URI has, I mean, they've got the Bay Campus, you know, that's fifteen thousand gallons a day that they send typically through the town. We bill them for all that, you know, they, we bill them forty thousand dollars a year or thereabouts for that. And I think that's where their, you know, our sewer rates went up, and we bill them as a customer, just like any other customer, so, and they're a large customer, and they go into excess every year, so they get a good-sized bill. But the, the idea that we do provide, you know, residential housing for URI, as well as have the Bay Campus here, those need to be acknowledged within those negotiations. But the current process was just, okay, we've got an agreement. It was established in parts between nineteen ninety-five and, say, two thousand five, the basis of it. And generally, the agreement didn't really change much, except for some of the, the, the fee changed a couple times, and the volume changed a couple times, but otherwise, it was the same agreement. So it's always easier to get something that everybody's approved, previously approved. Unfortunately, there has been a change of administration at URI side, both on, on my counterparts and in the upper, in the upper campus management, that they're looking at it with a different level of scrutiny, scrutiny at this point. But we do need to come to a, a, both a short-term for the lease capacity and a long-term for our, our ultimate, and what we, what we own and control at the plant.
Thank you.
Okay, so I wrote down some questions preliminarily, just so I wouldn't forget. And can, just to start off, can you just provide us with just a quick timeline of expectations of when this needs to be approved by? I believe that there, when, as I was reading through it, that there were a number of recommendations, including sending, from the planning board, to send this off to finance committee, to provide us with a recommendation on how an alternative would be funded. You know, a timeline of sending this to the RIDEM. I just want to know from our understanding, just what it is that we are, like, under the clock?
To, uh, the, again, the clock is from the funding source that we need to have all, we need to, the plan was to be completed by September fourth, but that's not going to be ultimately approved. But we need to, we need to complete all our work, and then the end of that will be the DEM's final review and approval. From this stage, we get, we have, uh, the eighteenth of August is when we need to submit the plan, revised plan incorporating the public hearing, all the public comments, whatever changes are addressed, to address those conditions. And, um, and get that to DEM by the eighteenth of August, and then they have, they'll review that. They issue a, um, a public, uh, there's a public notification, because there's a, an environmental approval component to the, uh, to the, to the plan, which this one would, would come up with their, you know, essentially, they'll come up with a finding of no significant impact, impact, because it, it is our plant, it's an existing plant, and it's, it's, uh, it's working with the existing expansion. So that is a thirty-day window that they have, and then ultimately, the approval is, um, their approval would be September fourth, October fourth, or October sixth. I think I have it scheduled.
Okay.
Yes, this is it. So we're at the public hearing point now. Final plan on the eighteenth to DEM, which, which again, it's, we've been through, we've been through with, with, from our side, technically, this is, this is, makes the most sense for the town, and, and to resolve all our issues, including the expansion for the Seaport. And then DEM would have two weeks to the twenty-ninth, and I think I may have seen that they may, they may lag that by a couple of days. But they'll issue their pub, thirty-day public notice on or about the end of August. And then thirty-day window clocks out to the end of September, then they would issue their final approval on the sixth of October. And then we would need to, you know, before December, we need to submit our final drawdown request and, and reimbursement for the, the, the design fees we've paid to, to the consultant, to, to the federal government for reimbursement. And then, but in between that, that's not on this window, is that after DEM issues that final approval, that's when that plan will formally be represented to the council for adoption. And again, it, it's, it's really to adopt the, the facilities, you know, for what our plan is moving forward. And I believe some of the comments were to develop some sort of scheduling. I think we'll, we'll have, the, the, the final plan will have a better idea of the scheduling and the sequencing in there of, of the, the proposed facilities. But this, this window is, is compressed, just due to the, the timing we have and, and the development process of the plan.
Thank you. Just as a procedural-related question, if the general feedback from the council this evening is in support of the recommend, the recommendation of alternative number three. But again, from the planning board, there was a recommendation, which I agree with, that we send this off to finance for review, and to provide, provide us with recommendations on how to go about the cost. Would we have to vote on it before? Or can it, while it's in review through all of these other phases, still send this off to finance for their review?
I think you do it any number of ways. In the, in the end, this probably should go to finance in some respect to get their analysis. So they should analyze all three options. You can decide which option you think might be right for the plan itself, and then move forward that way. But finance should weigh in, for sure.
Definitely, okay.
And just as a note, I know some of the, we indicated when, in my introduction, that it had been submitted to DEM, and then, again, this is, this, it's been submitted twice to DEM. Some of their comments involve the financial planning processes that, that weren't included in these first two steps. That's, that, and we need to work with the finance director prior to submitting that to develop a plan. And it's, generally, it's basic funding, you know, that will, you know, if we don't have the money, we'll have to bond it, or, or, you know, look for, as we said, we'll look for grant monies and, and other outside funding sources and the like. And then those, those detail, the detailed financing things could be, can be worked out, you know, after the plan's approved as well.
And alternative option three, again, a big issue that's been brought forth this evening was this, the odor. Would alternative option three, and based on your guys' understanding, address a lot of that odor that, because again, I see proposed aeration tanks. Again, I'm not an expert on this, but I'm just asking, as that is an issue that's been brought forth this evening.
As, as Andrew mentioned, this, this, the new design is, is set up, it'll be designed, and there'll, there'll be additional, there'll be additional waste profiling and the like when they go into the final design work and, and detailed design for that. But the, the plan will be designed to, to treat the higher strength loading, whatever the, whatever the design strength is that we determine, whether, you know, from this, it, it will be, it will improve that system, so, and, and be able to treat that. And again, we will also incorporate other odor control measures, because we are aware of them at this point.
Thank you. And again, this is actually a comment that I had shared with Counselor Durkin in the past, before I think we were elected, was this, what, how long this current agreement of the shared facility with South Kingston and URI has been in place? And to see nineteen seventy-two, it's, it's a lot of years that has passed. So I would propose, if the council agrees, to maybe take a second look at this, maybe, you know, can, take into consideration the times that have changed, the current makeup of the town, and maybe have some discussions with South Kingston and URI. I know one of the, one of the ideas that I, I think many of us shared during the election season was trying to build the relationship with our neighbors and having these, this open dialogue. And I think that this particular issue is one that I myself am continuing to get educated on as we're making these decisions. And I think it would be, I think, beneficial for all, especially Narragansett, if we consider having a second discussion with South Kingston and URI on the shared facility. And then the, you know, I think one of the, in regards to, I think it was the lease question, I, I, it was like seventy thousand a year. Does that fully cover what is being, um, like, expended by, I think it's from URI, right? Or is?
It's, well, we, we leased back capacity that they paid for at the beginning, and that's, and that would be the goal of, of this project. Like you said, the seventy-two agreement is the original agreement. There's been seventeen, eighteen other agreements, plus the lease, the lease amendments and the like in there. But we would, we would look to, you know, as part of this, you know, my, my feeling is, you look at the numbers, it's like, well, Narragansett just never had enough, you know, we got a lease capacity back. Who, you know, what, you know, blame the engineer, which engineer back then didn't give us the right numbers? But I don't know, in terms of, you know, you also asked a question about the, someone mentioned a question about the, the plant being in our town, and, but it's, but South Kingston is the operating partner. I'm not sure what type of, you know, being the host community, what type of benefit was given back then and the like. But the, the goal would be to come up with, you know, as a result of all this, get, everybody's got what capacity they need for the next twenty years, and everybody's, and all the partners are in agreement that, okay, we're all whole after this, and, you know, we don't have to worry about leasing once we get the, the capacity and, and the upgrades done that we need, need to have done, so that, you know, we can kind of try to do away with or modify the sewer policy to the extent that it's, it's, you know, more manageable and, and not a question of, okay, well, did it rain yesterday? Do we have enough capacity at the plant for this, for this project or not? But yes, I, I, I concur with you, Council President, that, that the intent is to try and revisit all of the agreements and get everybody all on the same page, and update those to the extent that they, they should be or need to be.
Excellent, great to hear. Just, I think, one or two final comments, if I can read my handwriting. I, I made a, I wrote down a question early on, when it was referenced, that there's minimum staffing on weekends, that there's a basic lab analysis that needs to be done daily. In your professional opinion, is there any work or any delay of the work that's, due to have, due to having minimum staffing on weekends? Do you see any benefit if there was additional help at that facility on weekends? Or do you, in your professional opinion, is the work that needs to get done, getting done?
The work, you know, the minimum work that is required for our permit is getting done. Needless to say, the, the odor issues and the difficulties we have, you know, if nobody's there on the weekends, and, and it's more crowded on the weekends, it, it becomes more difficult. But, and I think part of the challenges too, is, is, you know, one of the worst days is the Fourth of July, and it's, it's not just weekends, it's weekends and holidays. So holiday day, you know, everybody's, everybody's off on their plans. But we, we do, you know, work to prepare the plant to, to the extent possible, whether it's June coming into July, or Friday going into Saturday in the weekend, to make sure that it can run on its own. And we do have, you know, it is monitored and controlled, we get, we get reports of alarms and conditions that need to be addressed. And, and as we said, someone does come into the plant, you know, Saturday morning and Sunday morning. It's a three-hour shift instead of an eight-hour shift, but they, they go through and, and, you know, they walk the plant, check out, make sure everything's all right, and then do the lab work, and then come in the next day for the same. So, you know, we're meeting our obligations now, but, you know, additional staffing and, and other shifts would be, would, would, you know, would only benefit the, you know, the, the maintenance and the, the man, operational times on the plant. But that involves, you know, negotiating, you know, with the labor union and, and the like. We, we are reviewing the, the facilities plan does have a staffing component to it, and then there are other staffing documents, and, you know, DEM has to approve the staffing. And I believe that, that the, the press, the, the option with the solids handling may require an additional shift, and we could look to, instead of it having the, you know, an extra, an extra hour a day, a couple of days a week, we could possibly make it a, a, you know, a multi-man shift on a, on a Saturday or something like that. But, but yeah, it's, we're, we will, we will man the plant to the extent that we need to.
And then my last question is, this is, I think it was brought, brought up during the presentation, that the current processing plant, everything, the way that we currently see it right by the ocean, this is not something unique to Narragansett, that there are other models around the country that process this similarly. Just wondering if there's anything else that other cities and towns around the country that are doing differently that maybe not have been in this recommendation?
Well, so wastewater treatment, you know, since- Well, so wastewater treatment, you know, since, you know, since, you know, the early 1900s has been a biological treatment process. They've, there's been improvements to that process, you know, over the years, you know, being able to, you know, knowing what we know now and being able to, you know, control the types of bacteria and things like that, that wasn't done initially. There are often, depending on what the permit requires, so the, the Ripdys permit or the Rhode Island pollution discharge elimination permit, you know, so the good thing for Narragansett is their, their, your outfall is in Rhode Island Sound, half mile off the coast. It's an ocean outfall which has a very, so you have an easier permit to meet than communities that discharge into a freshwater body or a river. They, because, you know, you know, the ocean handles more, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. So the, the places that are using a, you know, what we call tertiary treatment or a third treatment process, you know, they would have to meet different contaminants. But to meet your permit for biochemical oxygen demand, BOD and TSS, to meet that permit that, you know, you don't need more than a secondary treatment process. You, you need an improved treatment process, but you don't need any additional technologies for, you know, additional treatment beyond that. In the design process, I know the odors throughout the evening have been a recurring theme. And, you know, during the design process, you know, right now we're in the planning stage and when we get to the design process, that, that will be a, a factor in the design. You know, so there are technologies you can use to control the odor, you know, air scrubbers, you know, you know, granulated carbon, activated carbon filters and different things like that, that you can incorporate into these designs that will, you know, in addition to a treatment process that's not overloaded in causing the odors, you will also be able, you know, there are technologies to treat the, you know, any odors that, that do come out. I mean, it is still a wastewater plant and, you know, there are going to be days when it smells because the weather changed, but, but there are ways to, to make that manageable and good for everybody. There are technologies available and, you know, the new treatment process would be the first and foremost in that.
Thank you. And actually I did have one final question for John. You mentioned SK in your, our SK's timeline, that they're a little bit behind us in working through their wastewater facilities plan from a timeline perspective and from, based on my understanding, that a lot of what it is that we're agreeing upon is also dependent on, which I'm wrapping my head around here, what our neighboring towns and other negotiations and discussions go on. Does, does the order of operations here make sense or should we be waiting for the, I mean, I don't want to wait. I'm just making it very clear.
I think that in the past, they had been done by the same consultant as somewhat of a joint venture between, between South Kingston and Narragansett. URI, again, they, they've pretty much previously had sat back and said, well, we don't need any more capacity. I think in this new plan, they may look for more capacity, but they would be responsible for doing something like what we've done here is, okay, develop what your flows are. This is what you want to do. So if they, if they look to have some more capacity at the plant, you know, because again, one MGD is a nice round number to, to increase the capacity at the plant. If we just said, okay, well, that's ours, we're going to do it, that's all we need. But, but South Kingston or URI have to plan for their additional work in there. So it may be, you know, 1.25 or something or 1.5, but they'll all, they'll, in terms of timing, you know, we, they need our number up there. They need that one MGD additional capacity. So that's really the number that, that, that South Kingston needs. They'll do the process evaluation on their side for that based on all the data that they would collect like Ray Pierce did for us. But timing wise, you know, it's kind of concurrent, but we've got our part done. So there's no, you know, we wouldn't need to wait on the rest of our plan to get this piece done.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for your time. There may be additional questions to address depending on how the public goes, but really appreciate both of your times and the presentation. Oh, Mr. Durkin has a couple of additional follow-ups. Sorry about that.
John, what did you say URI Bay Campus, the amount of gallons is 150,000?
I just looked at those today too because the questions had asked a few times and I didn't have it off the top of my head. It's about, over the last five years, from 2021 through 2024 fiscal years, it's about 15,000 gallons a day on average over the year. They have some slight seasonal increases. I want to say the, they're a little lower in the, because we, we bill them off of the, the water meter flow and their Veolia customer. So I think that their, their, January, February, March flows are slightly lower and the other three quarters are slightly higher, but they're pretty much consistent throughout the year for, for their flows.
And then, okay, thank you. And then is there anything that, you know, are all sewer plants open to the air? Are they purposely open to the air for their?
Some are, some aren't, some have, you know, again, if you go up north into Maine, they're covered, but it's not so much for the air, it's for freezing temperatures and the like. And then there is some odor control, you know, covering tanks can be done. But again, that's, the, the issue is, is, and is that we have, we on occasion with, and it's, and it's, if it was, if it came up slowly and it ramped up, we'd be able to handle it. But we kind of see, you know, a doubling and the increase of the, the waste strength over a period of a day or two. And it really, you know, the bugs, you know, the bugs are biologic, well, you call them bugs, the biological process, the biomass there, it's, it's, it's a sensitive, you know, entity and it just, it just can't quite handle it. So, you know, we, you could, you can cover, cover things up and make them, make them work, you know, a little better or, or try and control the odors, but that prevents additional challenges on the, on the treatment side for collecting condensation and treating the airstream and, and the like.
And then one other question there. So if we were going to move this on, then do we have to move it on and pick an alternative? Or can we move on the plan to help you with your timeline and then pick an alternative after we talk to the finance?
Well, I, I guess if, if there's disagreement on the alternative, we would have to go back to the drawing board, which would kind of throw everything out of the, the timetable. You know, the, 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 the issue, you know, the plant is, is, it's in need of, of a, you know, improvements and essentially replacement. That's what the plan is direct, is a replacement. And as, as many of the people, you know, the public had, had mentioned during the public comment period, it's like, you know, the plant should just be replaced. It's essentially what this plan does. And then to the extent that we can reutilize the existing facilities, but they'll need, they'll need some upgrade and improvement on them as well. You know, the structures are older. So, but, you know, we've gone through, you know, with, with staff, with the consultant and with, with the operating staff to go and develop the plan. And this is what our recommendation to the council is. So if, if there's, you know, disagreement as to what the recommendation is, we would have to, you know, address that with your comments and incorporate that into the final plan here in the next, you know, as we, as we make the changes.
And alternative three is approximately $200 million?
That's the full alternative three, which was 105 million dollars for the collection system upgrades. But, you know, large portions of that collection system, or that's the collection system expansion, I'm sorry, large portions of that would be, you know, Great Island, Harbor Island and any of those big sewer, sewer expansion projects. And then it was 75 million was the treatment plant work expansion. And then the rest of the difference in there would be, what was it, 30 some odd million is in the, the pump stations and whether it's, some need expansions and others just need, you know, upgrade and equipment replacements because.
So I assume that if you, you know, pick alternative three, then the bonding of the money can be done in.
Yeah, it's, it's all staged out. It's all staged out and it's, it's going to be sequenced, you know, so.
But 75 million for the Scarborough plant to.
Yeah.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, that's, that's, and that could, you know, potentially be a lar, you know, one big project or, you know, depending on how it's phased in. It would be sequenced in again with, with replacement of those existing systems.
And we have to wait for the South Kingston plan to deal with the regional sewer plan.
Yeah, the South, the South Kingston's plan would deal with the regional and then, and again, they'll, they'll come in with their numbers and their, you know, I forget what their, their timetable is. It's within the next year or so, if I recall correctly, I just don't have the.
It's probably the most one even the others times.
Any other questions for John?
So I'm, I'm just really trying to understand and understand this whole thing. And I think I'm just having a little bit of a, and you may have explained this. So capacity versus, so if we were to go plan three, alternative three, do you need to increase capacity in order to be able to run that plan? Or, I mean, how does capacity fit in with what's happening here? If you could just clarify for that for now.
That, that plan is to provide the additional capacity necessary to treat the projected waste for the 20-year period.
So with negotiations, and I, and I'm not quite sure how that works either, but so do they have the right to say, no, they're not giving it to us?
The, the agreements allow for us to ask, there's some other conditions on if we go over, if any one of the partners goes over their flow, which may or may not have been administered to the full extent that they should be had in the past. But, but yeah, we, we need to come to an agreement with our, with our, with our partners. You know, the, the, the difficult thing would be like, oh, well, you can't lease it anymore. It's like, well, we can't just shut the spigot, you know, we're connected, we have these flows. One of the other, other items that we need to, to address and try and improve upon is, is the I and I problems that we have in, in the central part of town. That's, that's a big factor on the regional plant. Scarborough, not as much, but the regional plant, it's a big factor on. So all those are tied in together to the, to the expansion plan, to the recommended plan.
So, so we should start having these conversations then and, and with them and just letting them know that this is what we're thinking.
Well, yeah, we, I, I, the, the draft plan as it was presented to the council and the public and it's in that binder over there, that's been sent to South Kingston already. So they have it in their hands. And again, we've already, you know, the conversations on our short-term lease capacity, South Kingston was involved in those, you know, and their, you know, their initial comments were, well, you know, what are you guys going to do about that? It's where, you know, the plan is to figure out how much capacity we need to treatment plant, the regional plant and how to make that happen, you know, in cooperation with you and your facilities plan. So that's, you know, I just.
Thank you so much for clarifying that for me. I understand a little more. Thank you.
All right. Let's open it. Oh, do you have anything else? Oh, sorry.
Alex, before you open to the public.
Yep.
Since it's finished up with one of my employees.
Oh, sorry.
So there's no confusion. We have been negotiating with our partners. It's not, we're not taking a second whack at it. It's like, we continue to negotiate with them and, and we've expressed our concerns. We're going back and forth on the draft. So I don't want the public to be misled to think that we are not doing that. We have been doing it. And regarding staffing at the plant, we also have on-call staff who get alerted, you know, the bells and whistles and the alarms and they respond and they notify the superintendent who in turn will notify John and me. Those are in addition to the other staffers that come in to do the testing, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. We'll start with Mr. Brady in the back. I go in the order in which I saw hands. Oh, and before Mr. Brady comes up, I just want to, just for a point of clarity, just to let everyone know that the planning board did provide the town council with their series of recommendations after thoroughly reviewing the report. They did their due diligence. They provided the council with these recommendations and I have confirmed with our town clerk that these have been filed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do. Mark, M-A-R-K-A, Brady, B-R-A-D-Y. I'm chairperson of the Narragansett Planning Board. I want to compliment you guys. This is not an easy slog through even for people to understand what's going on. We tried in, in our discussions, and it really wasn't a hearing, it was a great discussion, to try to ask questions that we thought people at home would be asking. So if you haven't watched and you want to, please, we really tried to get it down on a level where average people sitting at home going, asking the same questions as you guys are. And I appreciate, Don, your confusion because as clear as they were, it's, it's as clear as poop. A couple of things, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to answer your question, writing around the circles. We did not focus in on the regional plant. That wasn't the scope of work here. We did ask some questions and, and you asked similar questions. Right now, we are at capacity on the regional plant, on our share. We lease from URI additional capacity. One of the questions, I think, Councilor Durkin, I think you asked or somebody asked was, and, and Jim asked it, was the financial relationship. We pay for our lease, our additional capacity and we charge URI for the Bay Campus. They are not awash. We pay considerably more in our fee than we are receiving in our usage fees. And that's just a, a capacity that can, it's just a function of the economics. We charge by user and gallons and there's meters there and that fee does not equal the fee that we pay, charge for our, we pay for our capacity. Does that help? One of the questions that came up, I think. One of the things I really want to make clear is, we really, oh, another thing is, we looked at and we asked about holding off anything we did as far as construction to try to time with any construction the regional plant would do to see if we could get savings. They're in the same neighborhood and what came back was really no. There may be some stuff that they can do, but overall it's, it's apples and oranges and we really need to be looking at what we're doing. Our recommendation to look at it from a financial point of view was to utilize staff, finance committee and any, any experts in the field, but it was not to hold up this process. And I think that's the key thing here is if this doesn't go in on time and get approved, it's all dead in the water. All right, they got to get it in. We can look at the numbers after they start the process and while they're there, but they really need to get this in. And what we recommended was option three. And part of that was because we're hoping to attach both federal and state for economic development monies. But our recommendation was to look at that functionality of gallows and do a cost benefit analysis and see if it really benefits us. Do, do we get new jobs out of that or even keep the industry we have? Because those of us that grew up down here go down there and look and the fleet's nothing what it used to be when we were kids. But can we hold on to those jobs here? The other thing to understand is the technology that is going to be built in for that plant benefits the entire plant. It's not just that they're in a little corner. This upgrades our entire plant. One of the things that you were asking about are what are other people doing? We asked the same thing. And we asked what kind of new technology is out there? What came back was this is the newest and the best. It is proven, it's a benchmark. To start getting into cutting-edge technology gets costly and it also gets dangerous. You don't know how well it's going to work and you've got maintenance issues where this is predictability. We know it works, it's the newest out there, it's an accepted benchmark within the industry. I think the, some of us have been in a situation where we've had to make decisions today about things and said, thank God, I'm not going to be here in this chair 30 years from now to deal with this. John's in that chair. This really isn't any longer a situation where we get this encyclopedia of study and we stick it on the shelf and say, ah, it looks good. We've got to deal with this. And there are two things, and I think that's what's confusing also, is we have this treatment factor and we have this capacity. So a lot of the incremental money that we're talking about, yes, can help the treatment side, it's not going to do any good for us on the capacity side. And certainly not if, if we want to look at growth within the community. We're there. This one is ours and the regional one is coming down. We're going to have to share some of the, the costs there. But as I said, we didn't address that. That wasn't our focus. This is ours. This is ours. One of the things that we looked at, especially with the total cost of this, was really looking at, can we phase develop this? Not only from a engineering point of view and a functionality point of view, but from a funding point of view. And that was one of the things that we asked for, for a timeline, is what can we do when? And how do we do it? You don't want to take something offline because you could get the money for it and it stops the whole plant. We looked at need, impact, expiration dates. We also looked at repurposing and adaptive reuse of components that we already have to try to save money. Can we take something that's there and reuse it to add a benefit to the plant and reduce our costs? One of the things we really wanted to look at too was, how does this new investment affect our ongoing expenses? Do we hold still? Can we reduce them? Because we have new technologies and, and reduce some of our operating expenses. And incrementally, how well does our existing operations? One of the issues is, you know, the immediate one for the public is the smell. How do we, how do we improve with this investments? So as I said, we looked at the Galilee situation, schedule phased. Again, some, again, I was trying to write your questions down. And one of the things, I don't want to be a pair of bad news, but I am. One of the things that was not a scope of this is, so our pump stations and the plants were part of the scope. What was not a part of the scope of this work is our delivery, is our sewer pipes. Our pipes are 40-plus years old. Typical sewer pipe is eight inches. If you simply Google 40-year-old sewer pipe and hit image, and I wouldn't do it right now, and I wouldn't do it over dinner. But you're going to look and you're going to see that those pipes are no longer eight inches. Regardless of how small or big, if we can't get the waste from somebody's home to the plant, it's, it's really futile to improve, prove the plant and not be able to get waste there. So that was one of the things to look at. One of the things we talked about is looking at addressing connection fees. And I am not one to increase taxes or people's fees, I got to pay them. But one of the things to look at is our connection fee. And maybe look at the model of some of the utilities, especially the gas company, and what they charge for somebody to connect to the gas line. And, and then look at, how do we amortize that for the, for the user over a 10- or 20-year period? So they're not facing that bill upfront. Can we carry that? I don't pretend to know the legalities of that. It's just was a, a discussion that came up. The other thing, and correct me guys if I'm wrong, but June and July is not our, our only peak. December and January is peak, and it's mostly infiltration. Infiltration is, is a funny, is a, it's what engineers use, so you pay us to translate. But all it is, is water from the outside of the system getting into the system. And it usually comes with storms, rains, and water tables, missed, worn-down connections that are loose now, cracked pipes and those types of things. So we have another spike, and it takes us there too. So the sad news, and I wish I could tell you that, you know, we can, we can, you know, putty here and tape here, but whatever money we put into this just to kind of carry us, we're not going to get a return on that investment. And really, we're looking at replacing this. How we do it, really, these guys have done a great job of looking at all the options. We've really pushed to look at, how do we, can we phase it? Can we phase it not only in development, but also the financing it? And the other part, and, and again, I want to reiterate, one, they got to get this in so we had any chance of funding. I don't think the town wants to pay this bill. And two, the looking at Galilee was to look at the economic development part of this as a funding mechanism and helping in other funding sources to get us to where we need to be financially. But it does benefit the entire community as a whole because it will upgrade the entire plant. Does that help clear things up a little bit? Great, I compliment you guys, because I got to tell you, you know, just going through this, and I understand this stuff, it's, it's, it's not, it's not really fun, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I thoroughly enjoyed the presentation this evening. Talking about sludge and.
Yeah, exactly. And, and those are some of the things, those are some of the things too that they pointed out is the options for some of this stuff is going away. Or if it's there, it's going to be a transportation cost that's going to make it economically and feasible, that we're going to have to look for an alternative. And I'd rather look for an alternative that is part of a greater solution than just starting going ad hoc, we pay this to go here, this to go here, and that to go there. Anybody have any questions or?
Just in general, thank you.
No, thank you guys.
For providing us with the summary. And again, we, just to reiterate that we've, we have made sure that.
Yeah.
They have been on file, or they have, they have been filed, excuse me. And there was like 400 pages in that report. So to be able to get the summary and the recommendations and the five-page, at least the abridged summary that the planning board reviewed and sent over was very much appreciated.
And again, I compliment you, great questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schofield, I saw you next.
Good evening. I do. Yes, Harry Schofield, Nine Atlantic Avenue. Good evening, everyone. I am here tonight as, on behalf of the Narragansett Town Residents Association. And I have a letter to all of you on the town council, which I have copies of, which, once I read the letter, I'd like to submit it to the clerk and the council members so that you have a copy.
Thank you.
First of all, like, you know, dear, it says, dear, dear town council members. It, it's good to finally, excuse me. Wrong glasses. It's good to, to finally see attention on drafting a new wastewater facilities plan. Unfortunately, Narragansett's sewer and water problems have taken a years-long backseat to the ongoing battle between resident interests and landlord developer interests. This battle between ordinances to limit and control oversized build-outs and rentals and the slurry of landlord lawsuits to fight against them has taken all the air out of Narragansett's town governing space and thus has left little room for a progressive solution to our wastewater infrastructure. You, our town council, knew full well, or should have known, the degree of neglect to our sewer and water problems when you took office last November. And you should have made this your first priority. Instead, you chose to recommend 13 zoning amendments to the planning board, essentially gutting decades of zoning regulations that protect the town from overbuilding. These proposed changes to increase housing density are irresponsible in the light of this wastewater crisis. Fortunately, the planning board, led by Mark Brady, acted swiftly, responsibly, and professionally in responding within the allowable 45-day period, shooting down these amendments citing that they would be detrimental to neighborhoods and serve to worsen, that's the word, worsen, the affordable housing crisis. These amendments were crafted by developers for developers. There's no mystery, as has been said, as to how they came about. They were crafted by developers for developers. Most importantly, the planning board cited the detrimental impact these amendments would have to our already overburdened sewer and water system as concurred by our town engineer, and again, tonight. While I commend the council president for mustering the vote to shut this effort down based upon strong town-wide residential objections, together with the planning board's report, the fact that you are bringing them back on a piecemeal basis starting Wednesday night reflects this council's tone deafness to the seriousness of our sewer and water problems. Several times a year, Scarborough Beach is closed due to sewer contamination, as we've heard. For the past decade, we have been subjected to water shortages every summer. And now, South End residents have just been informed their water is contaminated. Overstuffed summer and student rental properties, too many showers, together with too much sink and toilet discharge are overwhelming, are already maxed-out system, as you've heard tonight. The seriousness of this problem suggests that not another shovel should be put in the ground in Narragansett to further expand its housing stock and density. The planning board report submitted to the council on July 24th states unequivocally that the current, you know, proposed, you know, plan that they approved that you just heard tonight, prepared by Wright Pierce, is underdesigned for unforeseen future development. The planning board report states that many pump stations are vulnerable to flooding. Further, before sewer extensions in environmentally sensitive areas are undertaken, the report recommended an analysis of the clean water benefits versus the additional load of new build-outs they enable to ensure the project results in a net gain in sewer capacity and water quality in areas like salt ponds. Finally, it's noteworthy that nothing in this plan addresses any repairs or upgrades to our existing sewer pipe infrastructure, as Mr. Brady just told you. So pipes that leak in heavy rain will still leak. Further, it is unknown how much added load will result from connecting Galilee Fish Processing to this newly planned upgrade, despite the fact that it's something we need to do for the economic reasons Mr. Brady talked about. Then there are our water problems. Not enough for summer loads. And now the South End water is contaminated. This is unacceptable and should spell emergency in your minds. Instead thus far, you have ignored the town's infrastructure problems in favor of making landlords and real estate investors happy at the expense of residents and to the detriment of any improvements in affordable housing, the detriment of improvements to affordable housing. Most concerning in the light of these issues is this council's steady efforts to replace good public servants on keyboards and commissions with developer-friendly allies. On March 3rd, 2025, Jerry Bernetto was denied reappointment to the planning board. Jerry was replaced with developer Steve DeSimone, who was the only planning board vote in favor of the 13 amendments. On every planning board vote taken during the planning board evaluation of the 13 amendments, Mr. DeSimone was the only vote in favor of adopting the proposed changes while all other planning boards voted against them. On July 7th, 2025, there was an op, there was an opening on the zoning board due to a full member terming out. Both alternates sought reappointments. Alternate number one, Alvin Keimer, was not reappointed. Alternate number two, John Bailey, was reappointed. David Trentisso was appointed to the full zoning board, and Karen Kanugo was appointed alternate one. Note that Trentisso was issued a violation by DEM for filling in wetlands, and that letter is attached to my letter. Whereas during the interviews, Keimer expressed concerns about development. On July 21st, 2025, Housing Authority member Vicky Board, with nearly 20 years' experience at the Narragansett Housing Authority, was passed up again. The first time she was passed over, the TC appointed Susan Cicilline Bernato instead of Vicky. And this last time, the TC appointed Frances Coate, a retired nurse rather than Vicky, who again has 20 years of experience. No doubt, planning board Chair Brady is in your sights for replacement as well with another DeSimone-like developer, despite Mr. Brady's obvious expertise. But for the record, this town needs Planning Board Chair Brady, and you need to reappoint him. Stacking boards and commissions with people whose agenda is to support special interests, in this case landlord developer interests over resident town interests, is the sure path to corruption. I note that Councilman Durkin is already the subject of a Rhode Island Ethics Commission full investigation. To summarize, the July 24th planning board report on SWWTF also noted the need to renegotiate terms of wastewater use with URI, especially due to the 6,000 to 8,000 students living here nine months of the year. Also in this regard, note that the Crane Report, which we've had for over a year, states that the only true solution to Narragansett's housing crisis is for URI to build lots more housing on the Kingston and Bay campuses. And for the town to use, quote, "a carrot-and-stick approach" to getting them to do so. Note that the stick part of this strategy is our current valid three-student ordinance that this council has refused to support and to enforce. I think these comments speak for themselves. This September will mark my 49th year as a Narragansett resident. In all those 49 years, I've never seen such flagrant support for special interests at the expense of town interests by any other sitting council. I urge the council president to utilize his leadership to reset the course towards the town's best interests over special interests. Thank you, and this is respectfully submitted.
Thank you. In the back, I saw her next.
One other.
Oh, sorry.
Just a couple of antecedent comments. You know, this was a wonderful presentation here tonight. And, you know, though not a wastewater engineer, I am an engineer. And it is obvious from listening to this that this is well-thought-out by people with good expertise in the field and that this Alternative Three is the only reasonable alternative. So trying to nickel and dime that is a waste of time. And as Mr. Brady said, you don't have time to waste. And the other comment I want to make is the fact that, in view of the monies going back and forth here between URI and the town, when you consider that we're paying more to URI than we're getting, at the same time, the amount of students we're housing continues to steadily increase, therefore increasing the burden to the sewer and water system we've spent the evening talking about. I mean, that just shows you how ridiculous the situation is for Narragansett, a town of 16,000 people with half the population being half the undergraduate class of a university that is negligent in not having put forth the living space. Even their own self-assessment plan says the university is limited because it's a dead campus and doesn't have the facilities, the living spaces it should. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back?
Yes. Christina, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-A, Tacoma's, D-I-C-O-M-E-S. Thank you. I have a question for the engineers. The biggest problem right now that I could glean from your presentation, which was great, I have two degrees, undergrad degrees in microbiology and chemistry, so I do understand a lot of what you were talking about with the, the microbiology as far as treating everything. It seems that, I think the thing that the council needs to understand is that we are beyond capacity at the Scarborough Treatment Facility, correct?
Just as a point of clarity, just procedurally, ideally, you have your time to speak during the public hearing, just for the flow of this whole hearing, if you could ask your questions and then we will allow them to come up and answer your questions.
My question is, is the problem with the Scarborough facility the capacity? That it cannot handle present capacity?
Is there any other questions?
Well, the other comment I want to make is the fact that if, what I've heard, it's a capacity issue and we need to rebuild that facility, instead of talking about putting a Band-Aid on it, and I truly sympathize with all of the residents who are dealing with the odor issues. I've dealt with odor issues in Johnston for years with the landfill. They have mitigated those. They have taken the steps to take care of that. But this is not happening in Narragansett for the residents, whether it's at one facility or the other. If the problem truly is capacity, the town council has it in its ability to try to limit the capacity of what's going into the treatment facility. One is the three-student ordinance. And why you, as the town council members, are not going to enforce it baffles everybody in this town. Why not? Can you answer that question for us? And the other thing is, in 2005, when a sewer project. And the other thing is, in 2005, when a sewer project was going on in Briggs Farm, there was a moratorium on building permits issued as well as sewer tie-ins. The town has the ability to have a building moratorium. It should be doing that. So will the questions be answered, or will we just be given lip service again?
Thank you. And I will ask if the town engineer would like to respond now or at the end? Okay. Thank you.
I'll respond to the first two questions. The first was, is the problem with the facility the capacity now? I think we may have not explained it clearly. There are two capacity issues, really. There is treatment capacity and hydraulic capacity. The Scarborough plant is within its hydraulic capacity, but its treatment capacity is stressed at times and overwhelmed at times. And the issue is, it's really the peak day that we get, the worst day of the year, we can't put enough air into the system because the, between the combination of the equipment and the tank configuration, it's just undersized to be able to handle that load. And unfortunately, it comes in in a day, but it takes a month or two or better to it resolve and get the capacity back into place. I'd just like to mention that, you know, my way sort of superintendent Scott Goodison, he takes it more seriously than anybody I've ever met in the industry before, and he takes it to heart, and if he, you know, it's to the point that it, you know, you got to tell him, it's like, look, you need to go home and get some rest. It's, you're not doing anything wrong here. The plant has, you know, we have a design issue here that we have to resolve as well as, you know, it's not like he comes in and, you know, the plant's running fine one day, and he'll just forget about it for the rest of the month, so. But it's, the capacity issues are, it's really a very short-term and a very shock-loading issue that we have at Scarborough. At the regional plant, it's hydraulic capacity and our ownership capacity in terms of the permit and our ownership there, so that's really more of it. The treatment process over there is a little more stable from permitting-wise, the odor controls aside, but again, that's SK's issue in terms of operations there. So is the, the other question was, is expansion, is the expansion of capacity just a Band-Aid? And no, it's not. The intent is that we, we increase the, we, with the new plant, the design will be designed for both the peak day, max day loading, and provide a better hydraulic system and the tank sizing and configuration, that it withstands both the hydraulic loads and the treatment loads that it receives better than the current plant is. And then the other items have to do with other council business and the like that is not part of the engineering work.
I'm sorry, it's not what?
It's not, it's not, not the purview of the engineering department.
Thank you. Dr. Alba?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you give in the matter now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Dr. Albert Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace, Narragansett, Rhode Island. One of the things I enjoy during my thesis work and doctoral work is to examine background research. So we have a proposal in the planning board recommended, you know, trace three. I'm sure these engineers are very skilled and intellectual. I would like to ask them where in their engineering backgrounds, from their, from their company or even another company, had a similar design as proposed in the town in Narragansett based on usage capacity. I'm sure we are not going to be the only ones that came up with this design. I hope we're not going to be just the prototype. I hope they have background research, because I would hate to have us spend all this money and then the stench and odor these people are going to have to live with. So I would like them to provide that as part of the analysis, where maybe the town council can actually go and visit those plants, speak with the neighborhoods, speak with the people who live in those areas. I think that's a good idea, so I would strongly recommend this be considered. It's a large sum of money, and even though the engineers and the planning board is supporting this, we need to have some kind of assurance that after we're spending this kind of money and doing this kind of investment, that we're not going to have this stench or some other excuse coming up. Well, you know, it's, it's due to the, you know, just the, we just can't keep up with it. Or they'll say, they might say, when we proposed this, we didn't realize that the building capacity is going to be increasing because of the state. If we're not going to have a control over this, if we are going to allow more and more houses, we're going to allow more and more ADUs, and you might, they might come back and say, well, that wasn't part of the game plan. So we have to see where a similar type-size unit, where it's located, and based on the carrying capacity, we have to look at the forecast of the future carrying capacity, because if we don't have that in hand, we might be setting us up. So we have to project. If we cannot control, also, we have a unique situation in Narragansett. We have summer rentals. I hear people talking about having control over four versus three, or, you know, to me, to be honest with you, three versus four does not really matter to me. You know, I was against some of the other issues. You know, these, these dorm-style houses didn't come over no year. People came crying to me saying it wasn't this town council that allowed this dorm-style house to get built. We had bulk zoning back then. We had ordinances back then, but what good are the ordinances if we're not enforcing them? I have, so we have to take control. We can have all the ordinances, we could have, yeah, we're going to enforce it. Well, when we had the four, limit of four college students, where was the enforcement? How about summer rentals? When we have people going into these summer rentals like sardines, where is the control? So unless we have a handle, we can have every ordinance in the book and say, we're not going to drop any of these ordinances, but if the town in Narragansett, if we're not going to regulate and have some kind of control, then to say that we have to have three versus four students, or to have a bulk zoning in place, and we're not enforcing yet, then what is the purpose of having the ordinances? So these are the things we have to consider. So you have to look at, and I hope you guys look at this when you're doing your design analysis, how many people are living in these summer rentals? How many people are inflowing to town in Narragansett, our population? Are we going to be able to handle that? Because if we don't have a handle on that, then we don't know if this proposal that you're putting forth, even though it's the best of the three, if that's going to be adequate enough. We don't know that, because there must be a certain capacity, carrying capacity even for this, the new and the greatest proposal here. But how do we know that in itself is going to be sufficient? Now, in regards to cost, we're saying, well, how is URI doing their cost? Okay, so in Sarasota, Florida, if you have a short-term rental, there is a 13% tax. 7% goes to the state, 6% goes to the town. We all heard in January, the state is going to have, I believe, a 5% or 6% short-term rental. Maybe, we don't know what percent is going to go to town in Narragansett. So we don't really have control too much over that. But we do, as a town, we can impose a short-term rental tax of, say, 6% on both the URI student rentals and short-term rentals. And the rental owners will be required to pay that, and that money will go back to the town, and that's almost like a usage fee, so to speak. And it may curtail the amount of short-term rentals, because everyone has a price point. Everyone does. And if the people who are renting these properties out are going to have to pay this tax, well, that has a good chance of lessening the amount of people who might be moving, renting out in short-term rentals. So at least we're going to get a return on our dollar. Also, Mayor Smiley of Providence has charged every street-level parking operator a surcharge, I don't know if it's a dollar or a certain percent. Well, we have a lot of street, you know, look at Galilee, right? What is, what are we getting in return for those street-level parking lots? Not a heck of a lot. Remember, we put together an RFP, we didn't put the RFP, we responded to the RFP. In fact, the RIDM, in Praxian T. Palino, of PRI 10, they put the RFP together, and they wanted to have in Galilee something which will help the fishing industry, help the town in Narragansett, help tourism, and what do we get? A 20-year street-level parking lot. We, as a, we, as a town, can request, as Providence did, and give a surcharge for all street-level parking. In fact, I don't even know if they, we, we never issued a special use permit, so they're actually, they're violating our own zoning in that area. So I just hope these are the considerations that we can have and think about, because, like I said, I, I know you're an educated man, I respect both of you as engineers, but these are the considerations we have to look at and also see, and I would like to see, and maybe you can provide that to us, maybe we can find out what city or town in the United States has a similar type plan that you're proposing with us. I also would like to bring out this one other concern. More and more cities and towns are getting flooded, inundated with flooding throughout the United States, four, five feet. Well, when I heard the planning board give the presentation, or the developers give the presentation, they said, one of the concerns about the plant being there is the water. If it ever gets flooded, there could be major overflow into our oceans, the toxins. So it might be just a matter of time when Narragansett gets five or six feet of water. So I would like you to address that as well in regards to what are we going to do to mitigate harm if we have a major flooding situation which has been occurring throughout the United States? Thank you for your time. God bless you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Scowcroft?
Oh, boy. Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you give in the matter now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record, please.
G.A., Gail Scowcroft, G.A.I.L.S.C.O.W.C.R.O.F.T. Okay, so I'll, I want to address the elephant in the room in a second, but before I do, I want to make sure that the plans that are being developed include the fact that North Kingstown is building 500 new housing units, and they are going to have to draw on their wastewater system capacity. Also, the Bay Campus is in the process of a large expansion, building several new buildings, including a new robotics facility that's going to need a lot of water. And so I'm not sure if that's part of, if those are the considerations that have been factored in, but we may not be able to draw more water out of the north end as we have been in the past. So that, that's a question. But the elephant in the room has been alluded to by several of the other people that have spoken before me, and that's the 8,000 URI students that live here nine months a year. And we don't really know if that number is accurate. I've heard 6,000 to 8,000 students. Well, in 1991, when our capacity was increased, we had a couple thousand students, and now we have close to 4,000, I'm sorry, four times that in our town for nine months a year. We know that about half of our population, September to May, is comprised of Narragansett students, undergraduates and graduate students. We are a university dormitory annex, and yet URI is not helping Narragansett solve our problems. Where are they tonight? I know Dean Simo is here because they want to use our beach, again, for their couple hundred students or whoever come here for Greek Day. That's fine and dandy, but where are they helping us solve this, this wastewater problem? It's their problem too, because we're housing all those students. That's the elephant in the room. The Crane Report was very firm about the fact that Narragansett needs to deal with the student population here, and that we can't afford to keep growing that population in our town. We have a three-student ordinance, several people have mentioned that tonight, and I will reiterate, none of us understand why you are not enforcing a solid legal ordinance in our town. It's irresponsible not to enforce that ordinance. And shamefully and disgracefully, Mr. Durkin, you were cited with a violation for violating that three-student ordinance, and behind closed doors in an executive session, that was thrown out, and we don't know why that happened either. So why is that ordinance not being enforced? Why didn't your violation stand? We know for a fact that you have violated it. So this is something that we have, the other council put in place so that we can limit the amount of use of our infrastructure, improve the health of our neighborhoods, et cetera. You guys need to work on this and straighten it out and get your act together. We're not going to stand for this level of corruption anymore in our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to give our engineers just the opportunity to respond. You can, John, if you want to respond now or at the end?
I'm not sure, uh, is this a technical question?
Okay.
I can respond to Dr. Alba's questions. One, the first question on when or where has similar design been used in communities? This is, it's called a conventional activated sludge process, which is used conventionally throughout municipal wastewater treatment throughout the country. So it's, it's all, you know, our, the Westmoreland Plant is a conventional plant, so the design is the, you know, that's the design standard now. The process was developed, you know, 120 years ago, but it's been refined, and again, as we said, we'll, we'll fine-tune and maximize the efficiency of the new process units and the, and the treatment, the actual equipment that does the air transfer, so that's, it's in, the, the systems and this type of design is in use everywhere, coastal facilities, inland facilities, seasonal facilities, you know, and we'll have the ability with our current system, we can't take it offline. The racetrack as it is, you start from the outside and you work your way to the middle, there's no way to take it offline, so it's been there and operating since 1983. With the new system, we have compartmentalized the tanks, and that we will be able to, you know, in the wintertime, we can take, or in the lower flow periods, we take, you know, two of the tanks, just can take some tanks out of service and not, not utilize the additional capacity and space for treatment that we, that we need in the summer to save, save wear on equipment and then also be able to make sure it's maintained properly. The design projections, the question on how many people are in summer rentals and the, the impact of the summer rentals, well, our flow data, our, our existing flows account for, are based on metered water use and, and, well, that's our billing is based on metered water use, but our flow data is based on the actual flow data that's metered at the treatment facility, so the existing density with four, five, six, one person in, in the rental units is in those flow numbers and the, and the existing data we have. The flow projections are based on current zoning, plus I believe we have, we are incorporating some of the, some of the legislative changes from the last year are incorporated into some of the design projections for the build-out. But if, if it changes that we can quadruple density, then the numbers would be off. So it's, it's, there is, there is an accounting for the legislative changes and the increased density and the existing the legislative changes and the increased density and the existing flow figures have whatever our current demand is. So the flow projections and our loading projections are, you know, fine-tuned to the extent that they can be.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And I'll go to the back. Nope, that's all right. I'm trying to keep track of who's already spoken, so it's hard for me to... Oh, no, no, no. Have you spoken for the public hearing already?
No.
Nope, it's perfectly okay.
I'm Angela Such. I do. Angela Such, A N G E L A S U C H. So as far as extending out the capacity, I think I read something in the report that they were accounting for like 2.4 people per capita per household in like from the 2020 census. So I find that a little bit anecdotally low, I would say, seeing that we know college students are more than 2.4 and our summer renters are more than 2.4. So that's just one comment I wanted to make on that. The second thing I wanted to talk about was I liked where Councilman Durkin was going, I thought with the racetrack, maybe as an interim solution, because we know it's going to take five to 10 years to build out, solution number three. So if we could do this, you know, use the outer ring of the racetrack with more airflow while this is getting built out to accomplish our capacities that we have or that we need with our current, I would think we would love to cost that out, a timeline, if an adds, I don't know anything about that, but I just wanted to express that. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any testimony to provide for this public hearing? Yes, Ms. Celiberto.
I do. Catherine Celiberto, C H E R I N E C E L E B E R T O. One night, I said to Mr. Gebhard, why don't you just send everyone an email and tell them just flush once a day? And he said, I wish I could. This is the problem. We have an inflow problem. We don't have a sewer system that can accommodate five, six students during the school year and eight to 10 in the summer. And believe me, there are eight to 10. I see it right in my own neighborhood in the summer. Our plants weren't designed to accommodate those numbers, and this is why Scarborough stinks and Westmoreland stinks. So you want an immediate solution to that, you limit the number of people in each house. And in the meantime, I guess Mr. Gebhard is going to have to send that email to everybody to tell them to flush once. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak for the public hearing that hasn't done so already? Okay, yep, sorry.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony given the matter now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Kevin McKenna, K E V I N M C K E N N A. And I live at 31 Pleasant Avenue. You know, you are to be commended tonight for the presentation on the sewer facilities, planning board, everybody involved. It was extremely informative, and I think it's going to go a long way to help us address some of the problems that this town is now facing. That said, you know, a few takeaways. First off is that we appear to have a capacity problem in both facilities. This capacity problem will take a few years to address. It's not going to be solved overnight. That said, if in fact we have a capacity problem and it's going to take a few years to address, why would we be thinking of tearing away existing zoning ordinances to increase housing sizes within smaller lots, allowing more rental units, you know, throughout the entire town, which would further tax our sewer and water system? I mean, really, what we need is a timeout. We need to think seriously of probably enforcing a moratorium as opposed to increasing the number of rental units within the town. And it's something, you know, it's something that we can't just, you know, put off and put off. It's become almost Orwellian in nature, from George Orwell's famous book of 1984. We're living that right now. And it appears that we're in a position where the party told you to reject the evidence of your eyes and ears. It was their final, most essential command. We need to start dealing with reality and adjust accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I just want to invite John up for closing answers and final thoughts from the council. First, again, really appreciate all the back and forth. This has been a very busy night. That's why I cautioned the length of the hearing early on. Do you have any comments on any of the final thoughts or any questions that are brought up?
No, like I said, there was a comment, or well, I do have just a short response on the projection of density in 2.4 people per unit. We have to, you know, we have to use some basis of our design and projections, and that comes from census data. Again, the census data is based on projections, and those are short periods of time, but we do have, we do know and understand what that increase in that max day loading is. And we, the existing loads are based on what our average load is, and we know what the BOD is, and we can project those numbers. So the numbers in the persons per unit, we have to display those in there, but those don't come into play quite so much on the max days because the peaking factors are based on our actual flow data. And then in terms of what we can do in the short term, we are looking to maximize everything we can do with the plant out there, you know. You know, I'm going to have some more conversations tomorrow with the town manager and wastewater superintendent, as well as our consultant, to see what we can, what we can work out and try and resolve those conditions. And again, unfortunately, it's, we're in the situation that we've just got to get through this piece here, but to be prepared for next year for those short-term issues. Comments on inflow problem? Yes, that is, that is an issue with, and more so at the regional facility where we just have a straight hydraulic capacity issue. And again, part of the plan is recommendations to look into those aspects more carefully with some more detailed design reports. And then the last one, we appreciate all of the, you know, positive support from the town and the public that we've gotten and from the council tonight, as well as the planning board. And, you know, it just, it's, you know, I have to concur that if, you know, anything that would increase density is going to lead to increased flows, which will, you know, impact what our design aspects are. So, you know, if they, if there are any other, you know, future zoning changes or state legislation that increases the density to the extent that we have to revisit our flow numbers, then we would have to do that at that time. But otherwise, I just, you know, thank the council for its consideration here and the public for all their attention. And, you know, it's high time that we get this project, or we need to get this plan approved so that we can move forward with these improvements that are long overdue.
Excellent. So thank you, John, Andrew, everyone, for their very thorough, well-thought-out questions and comments. And again, there's going to be a lot of questions and comments that come up over the next couple of weeks, and I'm sure this won't be the last time we hear the complaint about the odor. So again, please direct all of your questions to the town manager or the town council, and we will work to connect you with the appropriate departments to answer those inquiries. So again, thank you very much for being here and the amount of time spent on this hearing. So with that being said, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Next, on to, because there is an agenda here, on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve as presented consent agenda items D1, D2, D3, D4, and D5?
Motion to approve D1 through D5.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Next, on to town council business. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution in opposition to proposed budget cuts to the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority, Ripta, and elimination reduction of local bus routes?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Discussion. So just pull up my notes real quick here. So as many of you know, there have been many conversations around the state, especially in the immediate neighbors of South Kingstown, as well as ongoing conversations here in Narragansett about proposed budget cuts to the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority and public transportation around the state. And the more I learned about the proposed cuts, I was quite surprised and disappointed to see that there was any consideration from the state not willing to go the extra mile to fully fund public access to transportation, especially during these very difficult trying times. We've all got a lot of different economic hardships or, you know, the lack of affordable housing. This just seems like an absolute necessity from the state to fully fund. We're looking at an impact on potential jobs, access to healthcare, you know, and just to be clear, I'm just going to read the resolution as I have it written. I think I can get through it pretty quickly. If approved, this is a resolution of the town council in opposition to proposed budget cuts to the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority and the elimination of reduction of local bus routes. Whereas the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority has proposed budget cuts that would significantly reduce public bus service across the state. And whereas these proposed cuts include the complete elimination of Bus Route 69, which connects Galilee and Narragansett, and the elimination of weakened service for Route Flex 203, which serves the communities of URI, Narragansett, and South Kingstown. And whereas public transportation is an essential service that ensures equitable access to employment, education, healthcare, and other necessities for Rhode Island residents, including seniors, students, low-income individuals, and those without access to private vehicles. And whereas these cuts would have a particularly harmful impact on the residents of Narragansett and the surrounding South County area who rely on these routes for daily transportation, particularly during these challenging times marked by economic uncertainty and increased cost of living. And whereas reducing or eliminating these services will exacerbate transportation inequities and reduce access to vital services for vulnerable populations, directly undermining the state's goals for economic opportunity, sustainability, and public health. And whereas the Narragansett Town Council stands firmly, if they support, of accessible and reliable public transportation as a cornerstone of community well-being and regional connectivity. And that's basically the gist of it. And then it goes into discussion of the adoption. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be then transmitted up to the governor, General Assembly, Ripta, Board of Directors, and other relevant state agencies. But again, just further bringing additional awareness that this is a very relevant issue to all residents, especially residents here in Narragansett. And I strongly oppose the cuts that are being made and am in full support of the state reconsidering this and fully funding public transportation. So with that, does anyone on the council have any comments or questions?
I agree 100% with you. I believe it eliminates all public transportation within Narragansett, which is really a travesty, quite honestly. People need to be able to get around. People who are working here to do a job, who don't have transportation, need to be able to get to their jobs, and they rely on these bus routes in order to do that. And I think it's something, and I think we need to support this and get it sent up as soon as possible.
I took 66 for two years straight. It saved my life. So 100%.
Thank you.
All for it. Thanks for putting it on.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone from the public? Ms. Celiberto.
Catherine Celiberto, 48, Rose Court. With all due respect, the governor's going to get about 39 of these resolutions. What we have to do really is get our senators and reps, light a fire under their you-know-where, and to get them up there to advocate for us. I don't really think a resolution is going to help. We need some kind of commitment from our reps that they are going to advocate for us. So that's what I would like to see more. I'd like to see you send them a letter and tell them to get on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just make one comment on that. Senator DiMario, who does represent all of Narragansett, as well as Block Island and a portion of North Kingstown, did actually, was the senator who proposed the amendment to fully fund this initiative. Unfortunately, it failed when it came to a vote by, I think it was 16 to 20. With that being said, anyone else from the public? Dr. Alba?
Dr. Al Alba, 20, Progels, Ness Terrace. Yeah, so I do want to thank the senator. So thank you, Senator DiMario. I also think we should reach out to Representative Tanzi and Representative Carol Hagan-McIntyre as well. I think the more people we have from our local senators and representatives, the more force we'll have to support your fight. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Next, on to item E2.
Council President?
Yes.
May I interrupt for one moment? Would you like to just please take a vote to extend the meeting before you start the next item, because we're just about at 10:30?
Thank you. Is there a motion to extend the meeting? Do we have to do this every 15 minutes or just still, okay, just is there a motion to extend the meeting?
So moved.
As of 10:26 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Sarah. Next, on to item E2. Is there a motion to review the process and procedures for the workshop on August 6, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. So I believe, I just muted myself. Councilor Ignalli, that this is an item that you put on the agenda. Do you have any comment on it, or do you want us to?
I just think that now that we have the opportunity to speak to one another, that we talk a little bit about the format. Just to refresh my understanding of how a workshop works, it's a dialogue between the planning board and ourselves. And I just wanted to talk about how that's going to work.
So I proactively sent out a communication to the planning board members, as well as the town council, our town solicitors, town manager, trying to think if I left anyone out, but it was just to establish an expectation of the workshop, work session that we're going to have. I think it was very passionately expressed by many residents in town that there were some procedural concerns with the original proposed 14 amendments that were being brought forth. And just to clarify, that there are currently no amendments that are being proposed. This is a complete educational opportunity, and I've already had some wonderful conversations with members of the planning board, as well as town staff, about expectations for this. This is a, you know, again, as a friendly reminder, work sessions are an educational opportunity, not just for us, but for the residents, for the planning board. It's meant for dialogue and debate to occur. And a lot of decisions can be made even during a work session, even though no official vote gets had. It's a really great opportunity to hash out the why, the rationale behind a lot of the questions that are being brought forth. questions that are being brought forth can be addressed during these workshops and work sessions. And I, it is my hope and expectation that the work session on Wednesday and all work sessions that the Narragansett Town Council has, either with the planning board zoning or any members of our town staff, that they are done in a civil and respectful format so that we can get through the full review of the content at hand. I respect Mr. Brady and the planning board for, you know, having watched all of the testimony that they had to go through and the workshops that they've held, that there's a lot of questions and comments that get brought forth. So with all of the information that the planning board has retained, I value the opportunity. And again, I'm not trying to take up the floor here. This is just my interpretation and hope for this work session, is that this will allow us, as well as the planning board, to ask each other questions and to really ground ourselves with the interpretation, the legal interpretation from our solicitors. There's a lot of questions left to the unknown, but I think this is a really great opportunity for us to really clarify that, get us in the same room, and challenge our solicitors to an extent to say, you know, you're saying this, they're saying that, like, let's hash it out. So I want it to be collaborative, I want it to be educational, and respectful, that this is an opportunity for the council and the planning board to engage in these conversations. It is not a public hearing. Nobody's being sworn in. It's not like anything that we saw this evening. This is a strict dialogue between the town council and the planning board to review context, background, inform the council of everything that has been proposed or is on the books already for the ordinance, and also for us to have an opportunity to ask the solicitors' questions and the planning board's questions so that if anything gets proposed in the future, that we will have that rationale, those questions answered already, that we won't be going into any public hearing or any agenda item being considered without, while trying to ask why. So it is, you know, again, it was requested by the public to shoot down the fourteen proposed amendments and to start over, and that's what's being done here. And again, I just want it to be as respectful and educational as possible. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you.
Unless Mr. Durkin and Mr. Colonies have any other viewpoint of a work session. I tried to sum that up as best as I could.
I think what I'm hearing is that it's going to give us the opportunity to get our work done and to hear each other and ask questions of each other and understand each other, where we're each coming from, and work together on this. That's great.
And the only way in which this can be successful, I think, is for us, as well as the residents, if you have any questions, to please submit them ahead of time to the members of the town council, the planning board, send them to both of us, or just specifically to Mr. Tierney, who really is, you know, gets thousands of emails a day, and then sends them over to us, as well as the planning board. We want to answer your questions. We've heard a lot of the questions that are being asked. We just need to make sure that it's answered in the appropriate forum. And a work session, as it's been shared with me by, as well as members of the planning board, that's the appropriate, as well as former town council members, that that is the appropriate platform, or forum, excuse me, in which we go about hashing out the rationale. Does it make sense? Does it not? I think there's been a lot of really credible information shared this evening during the public hearing that I would like to, you know, have considered again at, on Wednesday's work session, for example. So again, that's just where I'm coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's good to clarify it for residents also, that they understand the process and what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Saloberto. Sorry, Mr. Frandy, I saw her first.
Catherine Saloberto, Forty-Eight Rules Court. So at this work session, there'll be no public comment? Is that what you're talking about here? If we have a question, we have to submit it ahead of time by email? This is not how work sessions worked in the past. This is a completely different procedure.
That's how previous work sessions were held, that it's meant to be informational and educational between the council and the employees.
No, no, no. I recall one work session we had about parking in the pier.
It's also not a public hearing.
True. And the residents were there, and they spoke, and they asked questions of the town council and town council, asked questions back and forth and all that. So you're saying that nobody from the public can speak at one of these workshops or this work session, and that if we have a question, to submit it ahead of time?
Procedurally, again, this has been the recommendation by not only our solicitors, but previous town council members, that a work session is meant to be educational strictly between?
Well, that's actually not how they've worked in practice in the past, but just let me focus on this.
Okay.
We are not going to be able to speak. We have to submit questions ahead of time. Correct?
That is the recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Frandy?
After everyone goes home, it gets a bomb dropped on us. You know, Alex, you know better than this. This is a pivotal moment here. I'd like to reiterate the idea of the motion. It is to discuss the potential amendment of the fifteen percent modification regulations passed on about December eighteenth to revert to the dimensions prior. That's a directive to move it back to where it was. Okay? It doesn't give much leeway to say, wow, should we change this? Should we change that? Maybe that's what you're trying to find out. But this has been a, you heard from the people already, and now we're finding out that we're not going to be able to have any input from the public? That's ridiculous. We've met with the, we meet with, we've had work sessions with the school department that you've been on. There's been some back and forth with some questions, and this is, at this late hour, two days before this meeting, forty-eight hours, you're going to say our questions have to be submitted beforehand? It's ridiculous. Talk about corruption. Now I'm starting to believe what I'm hearing. Why would you, why would you want to cloud this so much and then run it all through your solicitors? Because they're going to give you all the rules to say you don't have to do it, you should do it. This is a pivotal moment. There's a lot of people coming here Wednesday night, a lot of them, as many as the last one. So if you want to handle it this way and put a motion on two days before, you put the motion on that we're going to discuss it a month or two ago. Now, two days before, there's another motion by Donna to say, oh, let's just iron it all out and his. You've just told us that we have to submit our questions. That's wrong. I think you should reconsider that, and the council should reconsider that, in the vein of transparency, okay, like you guys always say. I'm sorry I have to act this way, but this is, this is bad. This is really bad. And these, what you're looking at is the five unrelated, and looking at also the wetlands issue. So I think just these are, they're just very pivotal issues. The planning board pushed this back five to zero. Here it comes back again, one at a time. So I guess you listened to some of the people that said, oh, drop everything and bring them back one at a time. I never agreed with that, bring them back one at a time. I don't know what's going to take the planning board to issue this, to say it's five-zero, that they're going to like what you want to hear. But I think it's totally disingenuous and against everything that you guys ran for about being transparency, because there's no transparency with letting people give them two days' notice and say they're going to have to. There's nothing on here that says we had to submit questions. I think, I think it's a failed amendment because you didn't give direction that we needed to give the, have the questions in by two days. This is the first we're hearing it. So I think you should check your solicitor about that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Al Alba, Twenty-Four Eaglesness Terrace. I would like to have you discuss this with the solicitor. Like I said, I love you all. I know you all have a love for Narragansett. People have been reaching out to me, as you know people do, as they reached out to me from previous town councils as well. And they all wanted to have a say. They all wanted to have a speak. So to basically almost shutter the doors and have people have to submit and then be vetted and screened, I don't think that's the most effective way to run this, out of all due respect. Obviously, President Menzies, it's in your hands, but if you could maybe just reconsider, so you'll be able to hear people's testimony, it'd be greatly appreciated. And whatever you decide, I respect, sir. You are the president, but I just wanted to share my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brady?
Mark Brady, Chairman of the Narragansett Planning Board. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm presuming what you wanted to state was that, well, and I'm not going to get into the debate, workshops are done differently, and we're doing it this way. While no comments will be made at the workshop, whatever comes out of this workshop will be a proposal from the council to the planning board. The council will have hearings, as will the planning board, and the public has the right, the legal right, they cannot deny it, and I think you wanted to say this but forgot, that at those hearings, the public will have an opportunity to speak.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve a request from the University of Rhode Island Pan-Hellenic Council to host Seize the Day with Greek Life at Narragansett Town Beach or on, excuse me, Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five, subject to state and local regulations?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion. So this was, I believe this is the second year that this is being brought forth before the town council, that this was voted two-two in the last term, and this did not get brought forth at that time. So here, we're reconsidering this again. And again, I just want to express my support for, for what's been presented here, and I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
I'm all, I'm all for it.
I think, I think it's a great idea to allow this.
I support it.
Plus, they've waited here. I think you're waiting here, right? Oh, my God.
Do you, would you wish to comment on this or speak on this?
Hi, I'm Allison Burke. I work at the University of Rhode Island through the Office of Greek Life.
Hi, I'm Casey Dorr, and I'm the Pan-Hellenic President for this year.
Hi, my name's Colin Binkley. I'm the coordinator for Greek Affairs at URI.
Excellent.
Members of the council, good evening. Steve Simo, I'm the Assistant Dean of Students.
Good evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here. Do you have any, just any feedback for the council and the public? Just, I know that there was a representative who came last year to explain all this, but just an opportunity just to give a quick soundbite on what's being proposed here and why we should consider it.
Yeah, I think it's a really great way for some of the new students that haven't seen what Rhode Island even has to offer to kind of get acclimated the first couple of days before classes start. It's also a really great way for them to get introduced to Greek life in a way that's not really formal, or again, kind of a pressure on them, especially if they're really far away from home. So I think it's a great way for them to see what URI has to offer.
And in the years past that I've worked and we've ran the event successfully, it's been a very good collaborative event with the town beach managers, Parks Department, Narragansett Police, University of Rhode Island Police. And it's been very successful in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-three years that we've had it since I've worked here.
So just for a point of clarity, previous councils approved it every year except for last year?
It, it has not, to my knowledge, gone before the council, but has been approved by the Parks Department.
Thank you. So this is a formality?
I think last year was the first time they brought it before us, before the town council. And I think it was a good move on their part to bring it before us, before the council. So good to see you again.
And thank you for, for doing, for going through the channels to do so. I think it showed a great faith last year by doing so. Unfortunately, no one on this council was sitting at the council at that time. I do know that there were at least two members at the time who supported this initiative, and I'm hopeful that this will pass this time around. Just as a question, in the years past, when you, you hosted it, you didn't have to go before the council, did you end up having something last year elsewhere? Okay.
No.
So very much looking forward to the possibility of doing this again.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it, and thank you so much for waiting this evening for this consideration. Ms. Saloberto, do you still have a question? I can't see. Thank you.
Catherine Saloberto, Forty-Eight Rules Court. First, I think Mr. Durkin and Ms. Vignali have to recuse themselves. Ms. Vignali's daughter's employed by URI, civic engagement. Mr. Durkin makes a bulk of his income from student rentals. I don't think either one of them should vote on this. Second, this is, I think this is before the wrong town council. This should be before the South Kingston Town Council. URI is in South Kingston, just for a little geography lesson here, and they should have brought this before the South Kingston Town Council to use the South Kingston Town Beach for this get-together. The other thing is this, that, you know, people in this town actually look forward to the shoulder season on the beach. They like to use the beach during then, and they already have URI students now. You want to truck in a thousand from, from South Kingston? Why? Why? Again, URI is in South Kingston. They should be utilizing their town facilities for this. But again, you too should recuse yourself. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Dr. Alba?
Dr. Al Alba, Twenty-Four Eaglesness Terrace. I'm all in favor of esprit de corps and bonding with the college students. So, you know, I applaud them wanting to get together. I do appreciate that, and I think that's a great thing. I guess my, my one question would be, and this was brought up as a common theme throughout the night, you know, costs. And, you know, we talked about sewage and the cost, you know, with so many students, you know, and the inflow of, so, so the thing is, like I said, I have no problem with this, but I'm just wondering, like, when we have our road races, I believe they make a donation or if they have to pay the officers to be basically hired out to man the races, there's got to be some kind of payback for the town. So my question is, maybe they can address this, maybe our director, Michelle Kershaw, she can address this in regards to, is there any kind of a cost or any kind of responsibility that we're going to be putting, God forbid, we've heard of fights on our beach. When we had movie nights last year, there was movie nights. I mean, and, and I'm not saying it might be the college students, but sometimes when you have a big gathering, there could be just one, that one lunatic, that one crazy person who makes something go, you know, I just want to make sure that we're protected from a liability standpoint. That's my main concern. Also, I don't think that we should have to incur any costs for our taxpayers. So as long as those issues are concerned, I have no problem with this being supported. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Al, there's two police officers that are being paid for by URI
All right. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Next, on to community development. Is there a motion to schedule a work session with the town council regard, I'm trying to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Is there a motion to schedule a work session with the town council regarding the possible integration of the urban redevelopment plan with amendments into the zoning ordinance?
Move to discuss.
I think Counselor Durkin moves the motion.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Colonies. And again, I appreciate Ms. Sabo for her leader And again, I appreciate Ms. Sabo for her leadership on this and educating myself as well as a few of the town employees as to what was being proposed here, why the work session was being scheduled, a long history there. I don't know if Ms. Sabo, would you mind so terribly just to come up, just to give a quick soundbite on this for the general public? Thank you.
Good evening, Jill Sabo. Thank you for taking this on this evening. So as mentioned in the agenda sheet, the urban renewal area has been around since 1969 when the plan was adopted, and I don't want this to be a history lesson at this time, because I think we're going to go through that a little bit with the consultant. But that redevelopment plan has had 11 amendments to it, and those amendments, the plan isn't, it isn't a typical plan like our zoning ordinance where we make an amendment and things are integrated. It has been a linear process with a word document that has followed each amendment, and so in order to track what the changes are, you have to go back and forth and sort of... My predecessor had a great document where he just wrote notes in the margins, and then you could find where the development regulations were, the landscaping, the setbacks, things like that, because they would change and they weren't, it wasn't clear and concise. So we applied for, through Commerce Corporation, we applied for a grant in 2020, I think I have it on here, 2023. And we were awarded that grant to take those, that plan and those 11 amendments and synthesize them into one, and then take those regulations and integrate them into the zoning ordinance. What I'd like to do is not present the draft, any draft ordinance changes, but simply to educate this board and our planning board, while they are aware of it, because we talked about this when it first came through. It's been on their back burner for a while as well, and they haven't seen the information that the consultant will present, which talks about everything I just mentioned, and they'll go through it in more detail. And then there are a couple of pivot points where they need some direction on, and they're looking to get that direction from the planning board and the town council. And then from there, we would move forward with any potential amendments, which of course would come to you for final approval.
Excellent. And the suggested meeting date of August 18th, 2025, that's a good date?
Yes, so I pre-pold the planning board just to make sure, and I had recalled from a previous town council meeting that you folks, sometimes you like to have those workshops, those work sessions before a council meeting. So that was the earliest date we could get.
And how much time do you think would adequately suffice?
I mean, I think if you started at 5:30 and it didn't go till 7:00, you might have a little bit of a break, which you might want, between that and your regular session.
Thank you. How does that work for the rest of the council?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I think I'm just a little bit confused. So this is not something that's going to be changed, the ordinance, did you say?
Right, thank you for asking. No, so actually, what it is, is it's taking the regulations that are already in place in the urban redevelopment area and simply putting them in the ordinance. So there are no changes. It's just taking the information that was there, and we would have to fish for it, and putting it into the ordinance. There are a couple of pivot points, like I mentioned, but there wouldn't be any, we're not changing dimensional regulations or changing landscaping or things like that. It's just taking that information from that plan and those 11 amendments and then putting it into one synthesized location, which is certainly better for staff, but it's better for residents, it's more transparent, I mean...
So I guess my next question would be then, so right now, there are not something that are enforceable, but once they go into an ordinance, they become enforceable?
No, they are enforceable.
So they are enforceable as currently as they stand?
Absolutely.
So they're not an ordinance, but what are they? Just go ahead.
So you sit as, this council sits as the deciding body. So typically, when someone comes in for our variance, they go to the planning board for a recommendation, and then they go to the zoning board for their decision. In the urban renewal area, they go to the planning board for a recommendation, and then they come to you, because at one point in time, back in 1969, the town council sat, changed their hats, and sat as the redevelopment agency. So when that ceased to exist, when those 40 years were up, and that was November of 2009, the council at the time, in order to not lose any regulation, they plugged that in right into our ordinance, and it just says, it refers to it by reference, everything in the redevelopment plan and all of its amendments. But as I mentioned, there's that plan, and then those 11 amendments, which are very difficult to follow, I mean, they're difficult for staff to follow, so almost impossible for a resident to follow. And all we want to do is take those changes that are already in place and put them into the ordinance.
Okay, I just, I'm just, all right, one more question.
Sure.
So why is it not possible to just take what's there and organize it?
That's what they're doing.
But I mean, so just organize it so you have a document that the planning board could refer to if they wanted to look at something? Like, I don't understand why we need to incorporate it into an ordinance. That's not making sense.
Can I just comment?
Sure.
I think, so I had a similar question as well, and just, this was already approved by a grant, I believe.
Correct.
And this is literally just taking just the paper copy of what's already on the books, that's already being enforced by us and the town, and codifying it into a more user-friendly format that the town residents can reference, the planning board can reference, we can reference, because right now, there's a lot of stuff that's just paper format, and this is just one of those ways in which the town voted previously to, and correct me if I'm wrong, to bring this into a more user-friendly, into the century format. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But the only other thing, and I agree with Donner, the organizing it for Jill's benefit is great, and I can see that being a problem, because the way we have to look at our ordinances now is just unbelievable. But as far as the final step of, you know, bringing it into the zoning ordinance is changing the control, and I think that's what the council at the time, they, you know, they didn't want to lose the control of the urban renewal area.
So Mr. Durkin, it's not changing the control?
Oh.
Yeah, no.
No. It's not, no. That's one of those pivot points, those questions that we had to the... Because the redevelopment agency no longer exists, and now you guys sit, is that, we had some legal questions about how that works, but as we're looking at it, no, we're not changing the authority of who has the control over the urban renewal area, it's still the town council.
And just again, as a point of clarity, I believe if there's anything that needs, like, is a major change on this, it would have to go back to HUD? Is that correct?
No. So the last paragraph of the urban redevelopment plan says that everyone, and everyone who would be affected in the redevelopment area would need to review and approve.
Uh huh. So a lengthy process.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just really confused about the process. I guess that's, like, so you just said, the urban redevelopment is no longer in existence? Is that what you just said?
The redevelopment agency is no longer in existence, but at that, when it was expiring, the agency, the town council transferred the power simply by reference in our zoning ordinance, and then gave themselves the authority to continue to administer the plan by reference. It's Section 7.1, it's about one and a half paragraphs long.
Is there anything easy about any of this? I mean, it's just like, everything is so confusing. Okay, I get, I think I understand it now. I just didn't quite understand it.
For clarification, it's not just for my benefit, it actually, it actually isn't me at all, it's the zoning official.
Yeah.
It's for the benefit of everyone, for you, for you when you're making decisions, for the public when they're trying to figure out what the actual regulation is. It's for everyone's benefit.
So Jill, if, like, say, what is it, Celeste there, they wanted to add a patio or something, what would be the process for them if they came and submitted a bill implement application? What would be, would there be a change in the process for them to get approval or denial?
It would still go to the planning board for a recommendation and then to you.
Okay.
That's the way it's written right now.
Yeah, I was under the impression it was going to bypass the council and just go...
No, there is a question of legality, there is a legal question out there, which might be what you're referring to, but we don't have an answer on that. But no, we're not proposing any changes, and Mr. Durkin, honestly, that would have to come before you to make the change. Yeah.
So I, you know, I don't even know if we need this... Do we need this workshop to listen to this? I mean, do we?
The consultant...
We're just going to listen to what you're putting together, right? You're not changing any rules, right?
Like I mentioned, there are a couple of pivot points. So for instance, the plan refers to all areas that aren't otherwise covered, well, I'm paraphrasing, covered in concrete need to be landscaped. The question is, do you want to refer to the landscape components in our current ordinance, or do you want to leave it that nebulous? There are, there's another one about, I think there's another one about setback, pardon me, not setbacks, it might be parking. There's something other, oh, no, pardon me, it's commercial uses. It says, the following commercial uses are allowed, and it's just sort of like a laundry list of three or four things. Do you want to leave it like that? It's a little unclear, or do you want to refer to the commercial uses in the, you know, it's a relevant zoning district, like BA, like the BA zone, and choose, and then pick from there? Or do you want to leave it that way? Those are questions that the consultant is going to be looking for answers on, so they can give you the draft that you're expecting.
So the consultant will be here during the workshop?
Yes, the consultant will be doing the presentation. Yes, pardon me. So it is West, I think I mentioned that in the cover sheet, it's West and Sampson, and they'll be doing the whole presentation.
Any other questions, Collins?
I'm just so busy, that's the only thing. If we go into September or October, that would be great. I just think that August is...
I'm just stuck in the mic, sorry, I can't hear you.
I apologize. No, I'm just thinking, August is just so busy for me, and I'm not sure I'm even going to be around at that point, but that's just my schedule. If we can go into September or October, I think it would be easier for me.
Is there a rush on this?
Is there a rush?
Well, at some point, we have to close out the contract with the consultant. It is a state grant, I don't want to jeopardize our funding for that.
Okay, so there is a deadline then?
The state has been very lenient with us, I would think by the end of the year, I'm sure they would work with us till the end of the year.
Okay, so if we win it to September? Yeah, if we wait it to the fall, then we could do that. I mean, waiting to the fall would be best for me, but if you guys are around, you know...
I mean, I'm good, I'm available on the 18th, but I also want to be mindful if, you know, to make sure that we have a quorum and Counselor Torialde is not present. And, you know, again, the date that was proposed and pulled from the planning board was August 18th, so I guess I'm just trying to leave it to whatever's recommended.
You can do it, you could do it. I mean, my schedule, and right now, I can't be there, but that could possibly change also. If you guys want to do it, I...
I mean, I'm okay on the 18th, but...
I have no problem.
I'm good on the 18th. Something different than it is.
I don't know what Ryan's schedule is.
Would you be all right if we just left it on the 18th?
No, I don't, yeah, me, that's fine with me, I have no problem with that.
So we'll, then, since the general consensus here is, we'll still be okay on the 18th? We can, are you guys good with the 5:30 start time, too?
I'm fine, yeah.
Okay. So I think that's sufficient enough, and again, mindful of all town council members, everyone's got, this is a very busy time of year, obviously, we want to be mindful and respectful of that as well.
My plans may change also at this point, but I just don't know, so...
Sure.
Thank you. So I think we're good, I think we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and have your questions. Thank you. Yes, I know. No, we are. We're, Counselor Colonies just asked if we still need to vote on it, I said, yes, we still do. And so there's a motion to schedule this for August 18th at 5:30 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to the engineering department, is there a motion to refer the request from Joseph Gil Martin in regard to Platte N-S Lot 380 for Withington Road, and the request from Michael Vickers in regard to Platte D-Lot 175134 Boone Street for waiver of the sewer policy to the Sewer Policy Committee for review?
Motion to schedule?
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer, sorry.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor Colonies. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to IT Department, is there a motion to approve the renewal of the Viewpoint Open Gov Application Services with Open Gov Inc. and the amount of $27,898?
Motion to renew.
So moved.
I think Counselor Durkin moved it, so you're seconded. Just want to make sure I'm clarifying.
Oh, sorry, second.
That's all right, thank you.
It's good.
Any discussion?
Getting late.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to Item I-2, is there a motion to approve the annual renewal of Office 365, Cloud Email and Office with Zones LLC in the total amount of $64,344.72?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
It's been a long day, long day. I apologize.
Yep, nope, I don't have any questions, comments, anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to I-3, is there a motion to approve the renewal of the Darktrace Managed Threat Detection System from SHI International Corp. for a one-year period in the amount of $33,914.20?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to the town clerk, is there a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the compensation of the judge of the municipal court?
Motion to adopt a resolution.
Second.
Second. Any comments? Anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Next is the executive session portion, is there a motion to retire to executive session of the town council in accordance with RI General Laws 42-46-4 and 42-46-5A2 to discuss and act on litigation or reasonably anticipated litigation, Marino versus Town of Narragansett, WC-2021-0556 and WC-2023-0060?
Motion to retire.
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
We'll have a roll call vote. Counselor Torialde is not present. Counselor Colonies?
Aye.
Counselor Durkin?
Aye.
Counselor Vignali?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you.[1652.51] All right, thank you. The time is now 11:23, and we just returned from executive session, and the only two votes to report out from executive session was, uh, the approval of the minutes and to, oh, seal the minutes, excuse me, to seal the minutes and to, uh, exit executive session and return back into our regular meeting, which both passed 4-0. Did I get everything? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn at 11:24 PM?
Motion to adjourn at 11?
Second.
All right.